Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for Wednesday, May 16th, 2007. We are here in Council Chambers, Room 340, John 4O Council Chambers in City Hall. Want to welcome members of the public who have joined us here today and our viewers on Channel 35. We are broadcast live each Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. on Channel 35 through the city's cable system and rebroadcast in the evenings. And we also are available online via webcast at la-city.org, where you can click through the links and watch live video coverage of the meetings. Finally, you can also call in on council phone, which is an audio service of the city, to listen via telephone to council meetings and any of our committee meetings as well. That number is 213-621-CITY. We have our agendas online at la-city.org at our city clerk's office and also available here in Council Chambers. The agenda is split into different sections, which highlights items that have not yet had a public hearing and those which have, all items will receive a public hearing either in committee or in full council. If we haven't had the public hearing in committee, you are able to fill out cards in the back and to be heard on the public hearing for those items. And there's also section for general public comments, so if you'd like to be heard on general items that are not on the agenda but are nevertheless under our jurisdiction, please do fill out those cards and give it to one of the sergeants-at-arms. Want to thank the council members who are here pursuing to council rules on time. Councilmembers Alarcon, Gruel, Lavange, Perry, Rosenthal, Smith, Wesson, and Zine. That gives us nine members, which is one shy of two-thirds, or ten, and a quorum, which is necessary to begin business. Thus, we are waiting for Councilmember Han, Councilmember Parks, Councilmember Reyes, and Councilmember Weiss to join us. Councilmembers Cardenas and Weezer are excused today. And so if we could ask Councilmember Han, Councilmember Parks, Councilmember Reyes, and Councilmember Weiss to please join us as soon as possible. When one of them arrives, we will be able to begin the meeting. Thank you for your patience, and we will begin shortly.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Gruel, Han, Weezer, Lavange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, ten members present and a quorum. Mr. President?
First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Alarcon moves and...
Todos los miembros del concejal están listos para empezar nuestra junta.
Next order of business?
Commendatory resolution to approval.
All right, Mr. Zine moves, Mr. Wesson seconds. Without objection, those two will be approved.
Mr. President, do you wish to take up public comment at this time?
Let's run through the agenda first and then we'll come back.
Before beginning the regular agenda, there has been a request to continue items 3, 4, and 8 to June 8.
3, 4, and 8. Is there any objection, colleagues, to continuing those? Seeing none?
Algún cambio.
Let's move on to the next items.
On the regular agenda, items 1 through 20 with the exception of the items that have just continued, our items to which public hearings have been held, reports are still pending on items 5 and 6.
Okay. Colleagues, any specials for these items? Ms. Perry? Number 5 for Ms. Perry.
And item 6.
And 6 for Ms. Perry as well?
Seis, señora Pérez.
Next item. I mean, sorry, any other specials?
Algo especial.
Any other specials?
Alguna otra.
Seeing none, let's go ahead then on the...
Mr. President, do you wish to hold items 1 and 2 for 12 members?
Yes, as the ordinance says, why don't we hold those two?
El número 1 y el número 2.
And on the balance?
Podemos esperarnos un momento.
Which items?
Cuáles?
Okay, let's go ahead on the balance then and open the roll.
Seguir adelante?
Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Vamos a contar los votos.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Aprobado.
Items 21 through 43 are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay. Let's hold the ordinances until we have 12 members. That would be 31 to 43.
Doce miembros del concejo.
21... Sorry, which one?
21 to 43?
We're holding 21 through 30 because the ordinance is to wait 12 members, so those are all the best. 31 through 43.
Tengamos doce miembros de la junta.
36 for Mr. Alarcon? Any other specials?
Algo más en especial?
Other specials, colleagues?
Algo más especial?
Nope. All right.
President, there is cards on item 32.
All right, we'll call 32 special for cards from the public. Any other cards?
Alguna otra tarjeta que alguien quiera.
36.
Número 36.
Okay.
Está bien?
Yeah. Ms. Perry?
Señor Perry?
Going to... I'd like to call item 48 special?
38?
Señor quiere notar en la tarjeta número 38.
Any others, colleagues? This is 31 through 43.
De la 38 a la 43, algunas tarjetas especiales del número 36, señora Alarcon.
There's no other specials. Let's go ahead and open the roll.
Si no hay nada especial, entonces comenzamos.
Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Tengo los que estaban votando.
Okay, those are approved.
Aprobado. El voto ha sido aprobado.
Uh, next item.
Item 44 is the closed session item. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Please, let's hold that on the desk for closed session.
On the continuation agenda, item 48 is an item which public hearing has been held.
Let's call that special.
Va a ser algo especial.
And we're not quite yet at 10:15, so we will hold the rest of those on the desk and come back to those for the special meeting at 10:15. If we can go back to public comment now, this is time for general public comment for items that are not on the agenda but are nevertheless under the jurisdiction of the council. I'd like to ask Arnold Sachs to come forward first as our first speaker this morning.
Señor Arnold? Yes.
Oscar Johnson will be next after that.
Y enseguida será el señor Oscar Johnson.
Excuse me, Mr. President, do you mind if I speak a little later? I'd still like to organize a few items.
Señor presidente, podría pedirle permiso si podría hablar después porque necesito organizar un poco mis documentos. So, el señor Oscar Johnson continuará.
Good morning. Buenos dias, señor presidente de la ciudad de Los Ángeles. En los últimos 29 años, en la comunidad afroamericana, he sido pedido de no tener buena representación en religión y racial. Necesitamos mejor representación del Departamento de Policía y tenemos la contra que tenemos por ser afroamericanos. Juzgando a negros afroamericanos que nos malasean en la calle y nuestra democracia y la Constitución, deberíamos de tener mejor representación empezando en el gobierno, en el estatal y en el local. En Los Ángeles especialmente, estamos, me siento totalmente abandonado económicamente y no tenemos ninguna decisión en nuestra comunidad, en lo que nuestra comunidad siempre ha sido un problema en la comunidad. Cuando siempre viene afroamericano, estamos siempre abajo y somos abandonados cerca del gobierno y que es tiempo que ellos hagan algo para nosotros en la situación que estamos ahorita. En esta situación que tenemos todos los días y la ciudad de la ciudad tenemos 180 millones de dólares para ayudar a las personas que no tienen hogar, abandonados, desahuciados. Y nuestro gobierno siempre nos está poniendo abajo, abandonados. Pero lo que estamos, tenemos que hacer algo acerca de nuestra política y en cerca de los Estados Unidos, que envuelve al gobierno todo el tiempo. Se supone que nos están representando, pero en ninguna forma ellos nos están abandonando.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Appreciate it. Mr. Sachs? And then Melrose, Larry Green will be next after that.
Señor, Mr. Green?
Good morning. Thank you very much. I'd just like to use my two minutes as a form...
No quiero, son mis segundos.
Bringing up some information. Again, MTA has board hearings regarding their new fair increase. And a lot of stuff has been written about MTAs that doesn't have the revenue sources... The revenue sources that MTA has right now are insufficient to cover expenses. And I would just like to question some of the expenses that the MTA is involved in right now. In an article from...
En un artículo que...
February 19th, this year, regarding the Gold Line construction. MTA was involved in talks with the Pasadena Gold Line Construction Authority. We have the Gold Line Construction Authority, we have the Pasadena Gold Line Construction Authority. We have the Gold Line Foothill Extension Construction Authority, and we have the Gold Line East Side Extension. You should pay attention. Your constituents are involved in this. They're the ones that are going to be hit hard by this fair increase. Why do we have all these construction authorities for redundant projects? Why is there a construction authority necessary when there's no East Side Construction Authority listed for MTA? What is the funding for all these? Is there a...
¿Cuáles son los fondos económicos que tienen?
What is the budget for these authorities? Why aren't the revenues that are expended by these authorities being looked into? Why is MTA asking for a fair increase when they have these redundant authorities? They themselves put out information stating that authorities do the same work. What is going on? I'm glad you're all paying attention. Thank you very much for the opportunity to talk in front of you. We certainly appreciate it. Your constituents will too.
Appreciate that, Mr. Sachs. Melrose, Larry Green is our next speaker, and then we'll go out to Van Nuys and Miriam Fogler.
Good morning. You know, I'm going to make the same statement I made yesterday to LA Police Commission, supporting the LAPD. Now, whenever you say anything in support of the LAPD, it never gets on TV. And the LA Times makes sure it's never printed. Maybe the Daily News is here. Posiblemente la noticia del Daily News están aquí. Parece que siempre que están... Except all the miembros del departamento. Yo estuve en la marcha que hubo de la calle Broadway. Y estuve siento que el departamento de policía fueron muy profesionales y corteses. Yo vi personas que estaban escuchando a las policías. Personas marchando que le estaban diciendo malas palabras enseñándoles el dedo de medio a otras, a los policías. Vi la bandera de los Estados Unidos quemando las calles de Broadway en el centro. Y oí personas hablando y también hablando de una revolución y hablando de nuestro presidente George Bush comparándolo con Biden. Y maltratando al departamento de policía. Pensaban que nadie estaba escuchando, pero posiblemente la gente de... En Los Ángeles están escuchando esto. Yo sé que iba a haber problemas, por eso fue que no fui al partido de McCarthy. Nadie en esa marcha estuvieron representados. Y esta vez, y esta vez en la calle Broadway, había nada más. Personas estuvieron desafiando, tirando piedras y botellas a la policía. ¿Qué esperan que el departamento de policía vaya a hacer cuando te están tirando piedras y botellas? Yo no pienso que el departamento de policía hizo nada malo durante la marcha. Pero esa fue la única forma en que ellos podían contestar. He's a good cop. However, he owes the rank and file an apology. Thank you, Dennis Zine and Tom Lavange for listening. Thank you.
Thank you. Miriam Fogler in Van Nuys is our next speaker, and then Sharon Brewer in Van Nuys.
Hi, good morning. I'm glad to see you here, Garcetti. You got a big fan with my friend. She looks forward to seeing you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I don't think you can hear me. Oh, now you can hear me. Okay. Can you set my time over? Because I don't know if you heard me. I don't, I can't hear myself down there. Anyway, I want to let you know that I support the LAPD because fundamentally, it's part of the ethics and part of our morality. And it's important to knowing that we have to enforce the laws that God has given us. We cannot steal, cannot murder. I mean, people would follow the laws. The police wouldn't have to be doing the jobs. We wouldn't have to be hiring so many police. I realize that there might be maybe a couple here and there, but I cannot see where they're just going around hitting babies and women. I just... It's hard to believe that could ever happen. I can't believe these guys are women in uniforms. We have people dying over in Iraq, over in Afghanistan. Tenemos que apreciar a estos policías porque ellos nos protegen, protegen nuestra comunidad. Y el jefe brad del policía... Necesitamos tener personas que lleven armas para mantenernos seguros y que no lastimen. No quiero que vuelva a pasar y no quiero que les suceda a nadie. Ya me siento acerca de todos los tiroteos que están pasando en las universidades. Me preocupo por mi hija que está yendo a la escuela, pero no queremos también maestros que ellos tengan problemas con eso. Y tenemos que proteger nuestras escuelas. Necesitamos más control a la delicuencia.
Sharon Brewer is our next speaker. Also out in Van Nuys.
Señor Sharon Brewer.
Hi.
Proxima.
Hi, Sharon Brewer. This comment is for Councilman Alarcon and the Education and Neighborhoods Committee. I just wanted to let people know that there's an election that the Incentive Neighborhood Council is supposed to be having on June 28th, 2007. Right now, there are three different election procedures that are out in the... That the public can see. One is given to the neighborhood council on January 24th, 2007. It's a 17-page document that was given at the meeting and approved without anybody reading it. You can have the procedures that are on the website. It says it was approved January 24th, 2007. But it also says on page 4... The timeline, excuse me, was revised on April 6th of '07. I don't understand how you can adopt something in January and have it revised in April. And then you'll have a revision in April, at least in the future. The third set of election procedures were given by the PC, the project coordinator of Dunn, on April 25th. It is a template that I have never seen before. I'm on the election committee. And none of these have been approved. This last one hasn't been approved by the council. There is no... Anything out in the public about this election going on, there is no engagement whatsoever. This election needs to be postponed. I went in front of the 9/12 commission last night and told them about the problem. It's a dead problem that it needs to be corrected to have three sets of election procedures out there. And then of... Are in compliance with the citywide election procedures, which I ended up going and... Challenging the election of the Incentive last year because of the same thing. Please have somebody look into this.
Vean a alguien, que alguien reciba y que vea esto al señor Alarcon especialmente.
Thank you very much. That closes our general public comment, and if we can now move through the agenda, we do have 12 members, so if we can take the ordinances that we were holding to await 12 members now.
Vamos a tener los 12 miembros.
And 21 through 30. Anybody wishing to call the special? We'll do 14 forthwith.
¿Alguien quiere hablar acerca de esto?
If not, let's go ahead and open the roll on those. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
Those are approved. One will go forthwith without objection, as will 14, which we passed previously.
Una tabulación de pasa, el voto pasa.
First, let's go ahead and recess this and call the special meeting, please. Mr. Clerk, if you call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Gruel, Han, Weezer, Lavange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 13 members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Hay los tres miembros ya están.
Thank you. First order of business?
Item 45 is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Okay, anybody wishing to call 45 special, Mr. Parks?
El número 45.
Next item?
Item 46 is an item for which public hearing has not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, item 46. I do not see cards. We'll open and close the public hearing on 46. Anybody wishing to call that special? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll.
Vamos a abrirlo.
Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
That is approved.
Aprobado.
Next item, please.
And the last item on the agenda, item 47 is the closed session item. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, please. And let's continue items 45 and 47 into the regular meeting.
Vamos a conseguirlo.
And if we can return to the regular meeting and take up the first item.
That would take you back to item 5, which is called special by Councilmember Perry, and the Housing Committee has submitted its report.
Ms. Perry, item number 5. Do you want to take five and six together or separately?
I'll do five. I'd rather do it one at a time. I don't want to create confusion.
Sounds good.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. We discussed this yesterday in committee, but I felt it was important to put this on the record for today. March of this year, Mr. Parks and I engaged the redevelopment agency in a discussion regarding the agency's desire to establish a land acquisition fund and the need for 10 additional positions. The matter of establishing the land acquisition fund has been deferred for now. Three of the 10 positions requested have already been filled. I do not see the urgency of approving any positions outside of the current budget process. Traditionally, the CRA mid-year budget comes before us in the fall. Now, we are in late spring, considering the mid-year budget. When the 2007, 2008... agency can report back to the council with information regarding the administration of the fund. I believe it is also true to adopt the CRA's original recommendation and to hold off approving any new positions until the 2007, 2008 CRA budget is before the council. The H C E D committee did not support the recommendation and approved six of the ten positions that have been requested by the CRA. But I hope the council, the full council, will support the CRA's original recommendation and not approve any new positions until we, as a council, get a chance to review the 2008, 2009 CRA budget. It is important to note that we, as a policymaking body, went through a reorganization process two years ago for the CRA that led to the regionalization of the redevelopment agency. Approving any positions outside of the normal budget process may lead us to essentially reorganize the agency in what may be a contrary direction. Additionally, it is important for the council to do the CRA budget holistically and not piecemeal position authority, especially when the 2007, 2008 budget will be before us within the next thirty days. It is not urgent to approve any of the positions. And I ask that you support my no vote, adopt the CRA recommendation, and defer approval on that point. So again, and in closing, members, support the original CRA recommendation. The CRA, 2007, 2008 budget has already been released and not approve any positions until the 2007, 2008 CRA budget is before us, and we have been given a chance to review it.
Is that a motion, Madam? Is there a second to that?
Mr. Parks will second that.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Parks is our next speaker, and then Mr. Weston.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to support what Ms. Perry said. I think the concern I have are several. We have an opportunity in the near future to look at the overall budget. And as we've done with our financial policies and done quite well in the general fund, is not to deal with non-budgeted items in the interim as it relates to dealing with the budget. Particularly, their overall budget will be coming before us very shortly. The other concern I have is this is totally inconsistent with the reorganization plan that decentralized CRA. And I think it took over ten years for us to come to grips with the decentralization plan. We finally funded it. We added positions. We've increased the amount of money and the level of positions. And now we are funding ten positions in a centralized mode, which appears to be bringing the authority and the power back downtown as opposed to fully supporting the regional concept and the region. The other issue, I think, that we're moving their authorities about ten positions, but we also, I think, violate one of our financial policies that we're using one-time money to fund multi-year positions, which then can only mean that we will be using money year after year to try to find out how we can fund this in the future. The other area I have a concern with, we see the terminology, and it's going to be South LA focused. It means that they're not going to be in South LA. It means that we're going to be working somewhere else with basically giving a task to view what's going on in South LA. I believe that decentralization was worthy of supporting. That is giving us a unit that looks at the area in which they're responsible for. I would hate to see us moving in another direction of countermanding that regionalization, particularly since it took ten years to get there. I'd also not like to see us violate our own financial policies as it relates to one-time expenditures for multi-year projects. These are things that I think we can all hammer out when we see the larger budget and see how the priorities fit in that budget and not take this in isolation. I support the fact that we held on for thirty days to look at the land banking issue that came out of the committee. But the number of positions should not be looked at lightly, particularly in the light of the fact that the overall city's budget is going forward, which we've all been made aware, this is going to be a very tough budgetary year. And so I would support Ms. Perry's motion and hope that we'd all vote to hold onto this and look at it in context of the larger budget and not do anything that violates our prior commitment to decentralization and our prior commitment to our financial policies.
Mr. Weston is our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members. I share some of the concerns mentioned by our colleagues, Mr. Parks and Ms. Perry, and the committee did a lot of work in vetting this issue. And I think that the committee came up with a plan that works and works now. We do support the committee. The committee did support the C A O, C L C, that relates to the land acquisition fund. But the committee also felt that there were some positions that we did decide to move forward on. So it is my recommendation that you support the committee report that came out of H C E D yesterday. There was a request for ten new positions. The committee decided that six would be the appropriate, three being backfill positions and three being positions that we reviewed as very important. Again, we want to take the four positions that we did not allow the agency and lump it with an additional fifteen that they requested. And we will discuss that next month, when we go over the budget. So even though I share a lot of the concerns with my colleagues and dear friends, Ms. Perry and Mr. Parks, it is my recommendation that we move forward with the actions that took place in the H C E D committee yesterday.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. And then Mr. Zion.
Mr. Zion, okay. What I wanted to reemphasize is we're talking about thirty days here. That's it. It'll be before us within thirty days so that we can be prudent, be circumspect, be consistent with the public and not piecemeal in the way that we approach this. Thirty days and the entire budget will be before us, and we can consider this in a holistic manner, which is what I believe we are charged to do. That's all I'm asking.
Mr. Zion. The Budget Committee with the recommendation when the budget was reviewed... Did the matter come before the Budget Committee when the budget was reviewed?
The jurisdiction is H C E D for the new budget. Now, it doesn't come to budget. Comes to the...
But the CRA budget was that. Any discussion of budget matters?
We had them come forward and explain to us the issues that were going on. We did not get into their budget process.
And my other question for the clerk is, would this matter then proceed to the Personnel Committee and to any other committees? Or whether it just be approved and go forward?
The Housing Report was submitted just today.
But what's the process after that? Does it go to personnel?
It's whether or not the council wants to approve what's contained in the Housing Report.
Well, if we give the thirty-day... As Ms. Perry was asking, or if we approve today either way. We have thirty days or not traditionally. Although we could change that, traditionally CRA matters have been Personnel and Budget have all been part of H C E D, just because that's where the jurisdiction has been. But that's traditionally been what has always been here. But it wouldn't go to Personnel or Budget? It would not normally. Okay. That's all the question. I'm going to support Ms. Perry on this. I don't think that the thirty days is under reasonable amount of time due to the fact that we're going to have some serious financial problems. Mr. Ray?
If I could ask, our CRA...
Director, I believe there are two real positive forces happening here. You're trying to establish our ability to create focus in those areas that have traditionally been performing either slowly or lag behind for whatever reason exists. On the other hand, I'm listening to my colleague saying, "Okay, where is the interconnection?" Formally, between the decision-making and how we're going to make these improvements. And the sense of clarification as to how those positions will function, who will make decisions, and how to include the council as a body in that decision-making. For some of us, we feel that decisions are made and we're kind of whole. This is where it's going to be, or we're notified by it when it's already done. So being very generous, each area has its own dynamics. But can you speak to that? Will the thirty days virtue? Will the thirty days give us a stronger sense of security that we can work together and we can delineate how the roles will interplay? Can you just kind of speak to that?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Thank you, Councilman Reyes. In fact, this has been before. I'm going to approve this on February 1st, and this was an urgent matter back then. The positions, in particular, this is not about decentralizing the agency at all. It's about supporting decentralization and regionalization. So there are three positions actually in the region that are proposed. There's an addition of position for housing programs and policies which are critical. We need to be a full partner with the L H D and the Housing Authority and L A S A. And in the regionalization, production of housing was regionalized, which has been very, very positive. But housing policy, there isn't one point of contact for housing policy. It's made it frustrating for Mercedes and for Rudy because they need to talk to seven different people about housing policy. But there will still be a management team. There's no attempt to change the administrative structure of the agency whatsoever. We retain a management team, which is composed of the CEO, the CFO, the COO, as well as the seven regional administrators. We're enhancing that by providing another position in downtown, two positions in Hollywood and Central, actually, three positions in Hollywood and Central, and additional one for community engagement and outreach. In addition, there are bottlenecks because the regional staff has grown quite a bit over the last four years since regionalization was implemented. There are bottlenecks in the centralization and the central processing of projects. So we don't have enough folks doing financial analysis. That's one of those positions. And I'll be brief. So in fact, this is an urgent matter.
Can you pause for a second? Council President, it's really hard to hear the speaker. We have a lot of conversation going outside and around the horseshoe.
Especially around the horseshoe. Please give the respect. Thank you.
Right. I appreciate it. Thank you, Councilman. So in fact, this is not an effort at re-centralization. It's to support enhancing the regionalization. Since I've come on board, we went and met with the regional administrators about what are the process improvements, what are the bottlenecks you're feeling? Can you get appraisals done quickly enough? Can you get SEQA done quickly enough? Can you get your financial analysis done? And we've identified some gaps in the central office where there hasn't been any growth, even while the number of projects has exploded because we've been able to get the projects done in the region and closer to the region. So the new budget proposes some positions to help backfill some of those holes in the central technical functions. These that are being proposed for the mid-year budget really are to enhance some areas that the council has enumerated is important.
Can you identify where the six positions will be focused?
Six positions. One is a senior real estate development agent in the downtown region. Two is a project manager for Hollywood, and Hollywood is absolutely exploding with projects, and we are very understaffed there. Third is assistant project manager for Westlake, and that's an area that has actually the potential to be tremendously successful. We're seeing a bit more growth in tax increment in that area. There are great opportunities for transit-oriented development because of the location of the metro stop, and there are availability of some parcels there. So if we could get a really hotshot A P M at the ground level to work and organize the community and to pull together some projects, we could see some great results. Fourth position is the deputy chief of operations for housing policy and programs. And again, that is to help us be a better partner with our sister agencies in the city. There's a senior finance officer, which would be analyzing the performance, the nuts and bolts of the finances that goes into every project that we do in the agency. And then finally, a new public outreach manager, which again would be in the Hollywood and Central regions, serving the council discos one, thirteen, and ten. And that would really be about community engagement, community outreach. We have so many nonprofits, community-based organizations that are working in very diverse communities in that Hollywood and Central region. We think it's essential to get closer into the community by having that outreach manager.
Knowing how we tend to be very deliberate in how we move our positions, civil service, or all the people we go through, is it possible to have a report back on the items that are of concern? My colleague, Councilman Perry, while moving forward in the process so that the issues that are being raised, the concerns on the communication and accountability level is addressed while understanding that the chair, the committee, wanted to move forward because we did not want to wait any longer. These areas are of need. Is there any way to work both tracks at the same time?
Certainly. And we are happy to do that. We've prepared quite a bit of correspondence regarding this, but we will be happy to put that together in a formal report regarding the structure of the agency, the growth and the bottlenecks that we perceive, and how each and every one of these positions, as well as the other positions in the budget, relate to filling those gaps.
So my understanding, there's a letter from Councilman Perry that raises concerns.
Correct.
Could that be addressed in the report?
Yes, it can be. And we've responded back in two letters, and we'll respond again, and we're happy to do that in a report.
Of colleagues, we all have a sense of urgency given the conditions of our communities. At least those who are suffering because of the socioeconomic environment that we find ourselves in. I want to support my Councilman Perry because of the fact that there is these concerns. It's a century, but I also know that both my district and Councilmember Weston's district, we've been waiting too long, and I don't want to wait any longer. Could this be a friendly amendment that requests that they report back, address the concerns of Councilman Perry while moving forward on these issues? Okay, then that... Then I just want to make that as a friendly amendment. And I want to respect Councilman Perry's direction and where she wants to take the policy.
Any objection to the friendly amendment? Ms. Perry objects.
Sure. I would recommend that we keep it separate. I appreciate Mr. Reyes's desire to be supportive of what I'm saying here today. I truly appreciate it. And I think he understands more than anybody the importance of getting staff out in the field to move our projects along. But I'm trying to make a record here, and once the horse is out of the barn, you're not going to be able to pull these things back. And so you'll have to figure out a way to fund them. So I don't want to affect Mr. Reyes or Mr. Garcetti adversely. That is not my desire here today. So obviously, they need to vote the way they need to vote. But in terms of clarity and making a very clean record here, and I think the CRA knows that the responses that I have gotten back on the letters that Mr. Parks and I sent were inadequate in many cases, and we will continue to have that dialogue to get answers that we need to be sufficient. I did that as a precursor to build the record so that I can bring that before my council members. But I appreciate this. But again, I'd ask that Mr. Reyes' amendment, and I think that's fine, but I prefer that mine be voted on separately.
Okay. Thank you. I'm Mr. Garcetti. Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues. Just to clarify on that, since there's an objection on... Any one of us can always object to friendly amendment. It just means we vote on it as an amendment. So that's what will be happening in a second. If there's something that I'm hearing across the board, it's about clear that we have to improve communication. I think that's something I'd like to communicate very strongly with the CEO, and I know that that is important. Mr. Parks has said, Ms. Perry has said as well, and to make sure that we can collaborate on this plan. And I appreciate very much the chair of H C E D, Mr. Weston. For us, for some of these positions, as we articulated yesterday, I know there's an assistant project manager for Westlake, which affects Mr. Reyes a lot. There are two positions in Hollywood. And I want to be very clear, these are backfill positions as well. So to move forward with those is critically important for us. But all of this, we can, I think, go smoother if we can improve that communication. I'm certainly committed to helping do that, but I think that's something that, walking away from here, the agency should understand very clearly. There has not been disagreement about those positions, and I think the move of the committee sent a very clear signal yesterday as well, especially with the acquisition fund, that that has to get better. Because of that, I think it's proper to move forward with not all ten. We've compromised on that to six positions, which is what the chair put forward, which is what the committee voted, four, one, three, one, whatever it was, however many people were left at that point. I think it was four, one on that. So I would ask folks to support that here today because we need those positions. The acquisition piece is going to wait, so we're getting that, and I think that's one of the two things that Mr. Parks and Ms. Perry asked for. The second piece, we cut in half. So three-quarters of what was asked for is being done. Let's not winnow that down to zero today. Let's stay with the committee report. Mr. Reyes's motion to make sure that those things are answered. But ten positions were asked for from the agency. We moved forward with six of them. I would say we should go forward with that. Three-quarters of the message is a very strong one, and we don't need to have four-quarters of it because that's going to hurt some of us on the ground in the agency areas that we need to move forward with our local people. So I would ask for the support of Mr. Weston's motion from yesterday. There's not been disagreement about those positions, and I think the move of the committee sent a very clear signal yesterday as well, especially with the acquisition fund, that that has to get better. Because of that, I think it's proper to move forward with not all 10. We've compromised on that to six positions, which is what the chair put forward, which is what the committee voted 4131, whatever it was, however many people were left at that point. I think it was 4-1 on that. So I would ask folks to support that here today because we need those positions. The acquisition piece is going to wait, so we're getting that, and I think that's what, one of the two things that Mr. Parks and Ms. Perry asked for. The second piece, we cut in half. So three-quarters of what was asked for is being done. Let's not winnow that down to zero today. Let's stay with the committee report, Mr. Reyes's motion to make sure that those things are answered. But 10 positions were asked for from the agency. We moved forward with six of them. I would say we should go forward with that. Three-quarters of the message is a very strong one, and we don't need to have four-quarters of it because that's going to hurt some of us on the ground in the agency areas that we need to move forward with our local people. So I would ask for the support of Mr. Wesson's motion from yesterday and our 4-1 vote in committee. Thank you.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me just ask, we've heard the comment about backfill. Where did the positions go that were now backfilled?
The downtown position, there is a grants manager who had a very particular expertise in grants and receiving grants. And we created a state bonds unit to try to access and play much better on accessing about, you know, $10 billion of the state bonds, as well as putting together a stronger application for the MTA call for projects. That individual was repurposed to help head up that team, and we actually were quite successful in the MTA call for projects, and have been, I think, pretty effective at the state level in shaping up how, like, Prop 1C will be distributed so that the city of Los Angeles is far more competitive. They've worked very, very closely with the Inter-HDC Prop 1C Committee. That position, the regional administrator of that region has requested that position actually be changed to a senior real estate development agent. But that's more in keeping with what he needs than a particular grants manager. The second is the project manager position.
Can you tell me, so that first one with the grants, where did it come from?
It came from the downtown. Yeah, as I described. The project manager position, when I first came to the agency about a year ago, and the previous budget was before you, there had been a direction from the council president and the council to take a look at what we were doing on urban sustainability, sustainable green work. We submitted a report, and we've had a number of communications with Council District 13 and other members about the importance of urbanism. We had a project manager in the central region who wanted to do this full-time. It made sense to us to do that, and he's been heading up basically a green team for CRA. The backfill would be a specific Hollywood project manager, and that's something that I think that the council district 13 has long supported. The third position, the assistant project manager, we took a vacant position that was a construction supervisor position that hadn't been filled for some time, and turned that into a workforce development person. We are, right now, are the obligation under the Grand Avenue Agreement to have a jobs coordinator, and to, we have a certain obligations to promote a pipeline of workers, local workers, some, in some cases, at-risk workers, and create this infrastructure to provide local hire opportunities for big developments, and principally the Grand Avenue project. That person has been hired. And the backfill position, again, at the request of the regional administrator, was to take that construction services position. Instead of doing that, what we really need is an APM, assistant project manager in Westlake. So that's the, those are the three backfills.
Let me just say, I think what my concerns are, and it's even amplified now. I think as the budget process works, is that these kinds of positions should be put forward in the budget, but for you to move them and then ask for backfills as though it's an emergency now creates a dilemma for CD 13 and 1 to say, give me back my positions when in effect they're, it's a man-made disaster as opposed to a natural disaster. I think that's the whole purpose of us looking at this budget in total, so that we're fully aware of all of the moves, where the positions are coming from, and if we as a city choose to fund those three positions, they should be the ones that are upfront to be funded, not move positions and then fund those that we've already funded in the past. And I think that's the dilemma and why council members are saying, give us back our positions because you in effect have moved to non-budgeted or approved positions at this time. The other concern, I think, it's our responsibility as a council to give oversight for CRA. If we allow budgeting to go on in the interim, our oversight is diminished, and I think we cannot lose sight of the fact that when the CRA runs out of money, what do they default to? They default to our block grant and our general fund. So it does have a fundamental budgetary impact if this goes awry. The other issue is, as Ms. Perry says, we're asking for 30 days to look at the budget in total, to look at these positions in total, and not to budget in the interim by moving authorized positions that are funded into unauthorized positions that are unfunded, and then come back and ask us for funding for positions that already exist. So I'd ask that we pass Ms. Perry's motion that we give it 30 days, allow the whole budget to be viewed and vetted at one time.
Mr. Zine is our next speaker. I have a question regarding Councilman Perry's statement regarding the lack of communication or response to correspondence that her office has sent, and it troubles me that she mentioned she's trying to establish some issues, and the concern is why the department hasn't responded.
We've responded in two letters, and I have them with me, council member. They're very lengthy with numerous attachments. We've offered to meet with each council member individually and have not had an opportunity to do so. We've had extensive communications regarding those questions, and I'm happy to share this with you. The copies of the letters were sent to all the members of the HCD committee. The members of the council, I don't think were copied because they weren't on the original letter. So we are happy to share this with you. They're extensive, they're very detailed. Again, we make the available, we would love to meet with their council members about these issues. We asked Ms. Perry and Mr. Parks, if I met with Mr. Parks on member vacations on other matters.
You know where the breakdown is then?
I don't know, Mr. Zine. I know I've asked Ms. Perry to meet, and we've not been able to meet. So, but I'm happy to, I'm happy to respond.
Well, that issue bothered me, that, as a manager, and I know from your experience in this attorney's office and working in a cooperative relationship, it didn't seem to be out of character, to be honest with you.
I agree. I mean, it was everybody who asked me to meet.
Thank you. Mr. Labange. And then Mr. Smith will be over.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. On these issues here, very, from a fiscal standpoint, you could understand what Mr. Parks or Ms. Perry are saying, correct?
Yeah, I'd love to address that question.
Right. So we can understand that, but from an operational standpoint, I'm informed that there's things on the verge that need these staff people to push them at this time. So if I understand Mr. Garcetti and the sense these issues in the Hollywood area, there's things that are, that need people to focus on to move forward now. Even though a process may be in July, it may be August, September before they get placed. Is that correct?
That's correct. For example, this mid-year budget was approved in February, so it's been on hold for about four months now.
Does the CRA have any staff that you do move around like this?
We do have the authority, the CEO does have the authority to move staff around on an unneeded basis. So for example, the bonds unit, being able to be more competitive for the MTA call for projects seemed like an urgent need, and we've been successful. I think we're going to have a lot of projects recommended.
Remember what I'm thinking, and I just want to know, Ms. Perry, because you're the inquiry here, what is being impeded, other than the process? I can understand the process. I can understand what your remarks were, Mr. Parks. Is there anything that's missing in the central area of CRA because of this move? Are you getting hurt by that, or is it more of an administrative interest because the budget season is on?
Thirty days is not going to hurt us in terms of reviewing the budget in its entirety. I don't have a problem waiting for 30 days. I do think that in the South LA area, we do need an additional field person. But that's just my opinion. With respect to the deputy, what's chief executive officer's comment about refusal to me, I felt that it was much more important to build a record in writing because I am not trusting of what I have been told. I have great doubts about what I have been told. Very uneasy with what I have been told, and I felt much more comfortable doing everything in writing because I think once people make a commitment in written form with respect to a question and a response, that's the record, and that's the record with which we can all refer, and that's a public record which can be interpreted with a greater degree of objectivity than conversation. So that's what's on the spot. But 30 days, I need more help too in my redevelopment areas. I think I have a greater number of redevelopment areas in my own council district more than anyone else, and no one is a bigger supporter of CRA than I am. But so 30 days is fine for me. I think it's an objective opportunity for us to review this as a body. That's all I'm asking.
Let me just ask a question, because things are on the verge, and I think things are happening. What if you did this in 14 days? Could it be done in 14 days? If today is the... I wish there was a date up on that one. 16. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Good job. Today's, could you have this by the first of the month? Could you report back to the council by the first of the month?
We could certainly, we can certainly report back, but we'd still like to move forward with the positions.
I understand that. Let me ask, I'm trying to help out everybody.
I appreciate it, Councilman.
So I got to sit down and talk to the councilwoman in the 15th district right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Smith is our next speaker.
How do you follow logic like that? I... [laughing]. You know, Tom, I feel the same conundrum you do. Mr. Parks and Ms. Perry put forth a really correct argument. Mr. Reyes and Mr. Weston put together a correct argument. I don't think there's a wrong answer here. I think we've got to find what works best. When it comes to General Manager, he was one of those I really trust. Mr. Mark, if I could ask you a question about this. That's you. From the CLA point of view, I think the question, the point Mr. Parks brought forward about, we hadn't really looked at it, what is your recommendation in CLA?
Well, we propose further review, but quite honestly, in the last couple of weeks, I've been doing everything with budgets, so Mr. Smith is going to address some of the details.
Mr. President Paul Smith. Our view of this is fairly simple, straightforward. We examined their requests. We look at their responses to the letters that were submitted from Councilwoman Perry and Councilmember Parks. We thought at this particular time, it's now, you know, pretty close to the end of the fiscal year. We're starting our overview of the budget, looking at it, and we think the positions that are being requested here, there are 10 positions requested in this. We did about three positions in the beginning of the year. There's another 15 positions in the request of budget. So it was our collective sense that we should look at these positions in a whole to put them together against the goals and objectives, strategic directions of the agency. Why this as opposed to over here? How are these going to work in concert with essentially the downtown office and the regions? How are these positions going to fit and fulfill those functions? Who's getting hired, at what level, at what rate, what classification? The oversight ordinance says we have authority to look at position, when they create position authorities. When they backfill stuff, sometimes they recreate, they reclassify it. So it's essence, a new position authority. It's, it's more of one, we need to be at a, communicate better about the terminology, how we look at this. And in essence, Councilman, all we're saying is, the budget's coming up, and the CFO has done a great job in presenting a new budget. We just want to look at their positions in context, all those positions in context of how we're moving forward. Well, I thank you for that, and from a public policy point of view, that is the perfect answer. And as a member of the Budget Finance Committee, that is the kind of thing I expect to hear in the process that Mr. Parks and Wallace have laid out. But we have concerns, by Mr. Wesson and others, that this will slow down some important projects that are in the works and need to have that. So I'm asking you, is there a way we can structure that to give them some authorities that are temporary in nature, that they can begin some of this work process that would be an essential resolution, authorities to, on a short-term resolution? As we go through the process, Ms. Perry and others asked for, and you've asked for, that we analyze it in context, and then determine what the real number is. Is there a way to do that with civil service restrictions? First of all, they're not civil service. They have their own, they have their own personnel rules and authorities, which, as I understand it, Councilman, they are in, in a process of reviewing their human relations and their personnel practices and their hiring practices. And I know that's a major undertaking that they're performing as right now. But I will promise you that myself and my colleague in the CEO's office will look at their new budget as quickly as possible, try to resolve the issues that are presented, and bring back a review of their budget in the most timely process from time we can. They have 30 days to come back with some information that the committee has asked for, and we'll take all that into consideration. As Mr. Labange suggested, is there a need for 30 days? Can this be done in 14 days? Cecilia?
Just to preface my remarks, we began speaking with the CLA and the CEO on these positions and this mid-year budget adjustment in December. Our board approved this in February, and it's pretty much been in committee since then. And I know there have been a lot of things going on, including the budget. So from our standpoint, we've been waiting for four months for this approval. When I first took office, I took, first took the position of CEO, I know that the HCD committee asked me, we want, this isn't really your budget, tell us what you want to do differently, and we expect a report mid-year, which is what we did with this mid-year budget adjustment. We said, these are the priorities of the agency under this new administration, under this new team, workforce development, housing, more regional staff in places that really need extra help. For example, Westlake, more community engagement has the need for a public information person in the Hollywood and Central region where there's a lot of deals happening. So we would like to move forward very strongly on the six positions. I think it is a great compromise. Four of those positions will be regional positions. Two will be positions that are dealing with bottlenecks, one being housing, and second being just basic pro forma analysis of deals that will affect everybody in the agency and everybody in the city. So we would urge that the committee report be adopted, and we will move quickly. We can get a report back to you in two weeks if that's, if that helps. We can certainly turn that around in two weeks.
Ms. Perry, would you accept a two-week turnaround in 30 days?
The issue for me is not two weeks, two months. The issue is that it be reviewed within the context of the total budget. That's all I'm asking. I'm not asking for anything unreasonable. I'm just asking that we not peace the limits. That's all I'm asking.
CRA says they can accomplish the, answer those questions within two weeks. If we can then have the committee, you know, real quick timeframe, then maybe some of those issues will resolve in a much shorter timeframe. And I think that's what Tom was asking, and I, if that's a doable, I think that's a good decision.
I think that would be up to the chairman of HCD as to whether or not he can schedule that item in two weeks.
Okay.
Just the committee report, but the positions would move forward.
Thank you.
Is that a formal move on that report back from Smith and Labange?
Mr. Smith moved, Mr. Labange seconded, but we reduced it to 14 days with the insurance of the committee chairman that would move it immediately through his committee.
Great. All right. Mr. Parks is next, and then Ms. Perry.
Let me just ask clarification. What are we moving in two weeks? Is it just the response on these issues or the whole budget?
Just on this item, Mr. Parks. You know, I just want to know, and I, again, I, I respect your concerns, and I respect Jan's concerns. I don't view this as if we took a piecemeal approach. The committee thoroughly vetted this. We came up with a compromise that we believe that everyone can live with. The sky will not fall, it's not the end of the world if we give them these six positions. They requested 10, we gave them 6. They want 15 more. We will discuss that in its entirety.
We've got now, just to clarify procedure, what we have on the table, I'll let everybody know. If this formal motion that was made, we have 15, this amendment really to what Mr. Reyes moved, which was that there be a 30-day report back on those issues, the positions move forward. Then that was amended to 15, which would come first. So 15, if there's no objection to that piece, which there may be... When you say the positions would move forward, the three or the six?
The six, not the 10 that was asked for by CRA. The six that was, I don't think any, I haven't heard anybody move three forward. Please correct me if I'm wrong, anybody. So six, as the Chair of HCD recommended and the HCD committee had. Then there's also on the table, holding everything for 30 days, which would come next. This is going backwards. Ms. Perry's motion, seconded by Mr. Parks. Then there's the committee report, which says nothing about report back, but it's six positions. And then there's been talk about the CLA report, but that's...
Let's ask what Ms. Perry moved. All right. Mr. Parks?
Let me ask, the CEO is present. Could you give us your review of the report? Is that a joint CLA/CEO report?
Lisa Johnson-Smith, the city administrative officer. Yes, it is a joint CEO and CLA report. Just to comment on what we, both offices wanted to have an opportunity to review, the 10 positions that were requested, as well as the 15 positions that are being proposed in the 2007, '08 budget. In addition, the council had requested that the, that the agency provide a management assessment of their decentralized organizational structure last year and report those findings within six months. The agency has told us that that assessment is included in their proposed budget, and we wanted to include that review as part of our review of their total 25 positions requested.
requested.
And I think the concern I have, again, as it relates to the amount of money, what we're talking about is spending money that is over this year, which is one-time money. We've not looked at it in multi-year phases, and we also have to remember always what the default is. The default is block grant or general fund money. And so we, it could impact the fact of the city's budget. I would be far more sensitive to these positions if they were vacancies that are treated out. But we realize that three of them were actually a conscious decision to move them, which then allowed the regions to go short, and now we're trying to backfill that decision. That's why I have less sensitivity with it. So I think that's what the concern is, is why we're in this position, and why would we look at six positions when there may be as many as twenty-plus that's being looked at as a budget in general?
Ms. Perry?
Just to close, Mr. Chair, again, thirty days is something that is, something that we moved a little faster, if the agency prepares whatever they need to prepare, to schedule for a committee with Mr. Weston, they can make it thirty days, they can make it two weeks. But again, all I am asking for is a review within the context of the normal budget package. That's all I'm asking for, and that's all that my motion asks for.
Okay. Anybody else wishing to be heard? Mr. LeBange?
Information, the friendly amendment of Mr. Smith was accepted. There was no objection, so that's fifteen days. Fifteen days?
It was an amendment on Mr. to the motion that Mr. Reyes moved of thirty days.
Just for clarification and simplicity, I ask that Mr. Reyes's friendly amendment not be attached to what I put forth today.
Right, that's not a friendly amendment. That has to be voted on first separately, and we'll move to yours if that does not pass. And then, if that does not pass on yours, then we will have the committee report before. Okay? So colleagues, we have potentially three votes. The first one, going backwards in the order, is Mr. Reyes's motion as amended, which is report back on those issues in fifteen days to move the positions forward but to hold back as was in the committee report on the rest of the items, as was requested by Ms. Perry's motion in committee. Okay? Is that clear to everybody what we're voting on this time?
So I asked for a yes vote on my motion?
We're voting Mr. Reyes's first, and then we come to yours.
Okay.
Okay? Mr. Russell?
Again, so right now, we are voting on the Reyes motion.
Exactly. We go, we go.
And reiterating what the motion does.
Right. Reiterating its fifteen-day report back. It moves forward six positions but holds up the rest of the budget items, the acquisition fund, and the remaining four positions. Okay? Everybody clear on that?
Asking for a no vote on that, because again, within the context of the budget is what I seek.
Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes, three noes.
Okay, that is approved. And so that will, because there are other ones that were before us, that actually gets approved. The other two will not be voted on, just procedurally, okay? So the rest will be held back for the budget in thirty days, and fifteen days we'll have a report back on that as well. Okay? Next item, please.
Item six was called special by Councilmember Perry.
Okay. Ms. Perry, item number six, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. This is a historic Paul Williams Building off of Central Avenue, the Angeles Funeral Home, and it has been vacant for the last thirty years. This is a building that will be developed into a childcare center and health and wellness center. It is an amazing project which will deliver badly needed services to the Central Avenue corridor and preserve an important historic building. The redevelopment agency is acquiring the building for CEC, which is Community Enhancement Corporation. And CEC is raising the capital for rehabilitation. This is a project that has been tied to the approval of the redevelopment agency. Mr. Chair, could I ask for, Mr. President, Mr. President, could I ask for people to listen? Thank you. This project has been tied to the approval of the redevelopment agency's mid-year budget. And I just want to reemphasize again that this project and getting the funds to move forward for acquisition has been tied to the council approval of the redevelopment agency's mid-year budget. I would like to say for the record that it makes no sense to have this project tied to the approval of the mid-year budget, because none of the funds being used for the acquisition of this property have any association with or to the mid-year special funding request, such as, as earlier referenced, the land acquisition fund, or again, the hiring of ten employees. Again, this project has been tied to that. To be clear, these funds were unspent last year. They automatically go to the carryover budget. So in a sense, they are part of the mid-year budget approval, since all its unspent funds get put in the carryover budget. These funds are appropriate to use as the Angeles Funeral Home is an important opportunity site on Central Avenue. And again, I just wanted to clarify what I believe we accomplished in committee yesterday, which was to separate the two concepts and do not tie the approval of funds for this project to the mid-year carryover budget for the redevelopment agency.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Perry. Any other councilmembers wishing to be heard on this? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved, and that will move forward separately. Next item, please.
Item thirty-two was called special for Cards from the Public.
Okay. Item thirty-two, Arnold Sachs is our first speaker. Then we'll go out to San Fernando Valley, and Miriam Fogler will be our second, and Sharon Brewer will be our third speaker.
Yes, Mr. Reyes. I'd like to reconsider item fifteen.
Fifteen, okay.
The reason being that, unfortunately, because of plum workload, I lost forum. I spent about the last hour on my own, so now we have to have public hearings on those items.
Okay, got you. We will, why don't we go ahead and open the roll and reconsideration fifteen, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
We'll call that special for Cards from the Public as well. Mr. Sachs on item number thirty-two.
Yes, sir. Just very quickly, allowing the Salvation Army to have their fees waived, they have property in Ranch Palace Verdes that rivals First Castle, only if First Castle was bigger. I just don't think that's appropriate use of city funds for Salvation Army to have fees waived. I know they do supposedly a fantastic job of soliciting funds, but when they have property up in Ranch Palace Verdes, the size that they do, I don't think they need to have funds waived.
Thank you. Next, go to Miriam Fogler in Van Nuys. Welcome, Ms. Fogler.
Yes. Good afternoon, well, again, to be afternoon. Why can't we have officially sound city? If we can, we can make these fees accountable to everything we spend, you know, we spend, and also, you know, like we were talking about the CRA, the fees too. All this stuff is all piled into our big budget for the year. Bernie Parks, we need to consider that we need to, not to consider, but we need to do this and put it in action and stop wasting our dollars and money that we need for our city services, because we need to, like I said, the telephone, the cell phones, the tax, we're using that, and here you're spending all this money. And Sharon Brewer just added, tabulated all the numbers here, and she's going to give you the noodle kaboodle, you know, here, and I'm just letting you know that you've got to really be sound and, and, you know, budget here, because everybody has to live by a budget. We all do, and it has to be done. That's the way it has to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon Brewer is our next speaker.
Hi, you've been warned. There are twenty-two special events listed. Nineteen are asking for fee waivers. The nineteen events add up to two-hundred-twenty-nine-thousand-five-hundred-and-forty-six dollars. I broke it down by council districts. CD fourteen has two events, five-thousand-five-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars. CD thirteen, a hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand-one-hundred-and-ten dollars, three events. CD fifteen, two-thousand-sixty-six dollars, two events. CD nine, twenty-seven-thousand-eight-hundred-and-sixty-nine, three events. CD two, nineteen-thousand-three-hundred-and-ten, three events. CD eleven, thirty-three-thousand-nine-hundred-and-sixty-six, five events. CD three, one-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty-one event. Also, item number thirty-three, which is a special event, fee waivers, fifty-four-thousand dollars in CD nine, it does go and say that they may, it may be reimbursed, but that would make a total of two-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand-five-hundred-and-forty-six dollars for twenty special event fee waivers. I'm sorry that somebody needs to look into this with budget cuts, the mayor budget cuts and different programs being cut or removed. So please look at these fee waivers that are out of control. Thank you.
Thank you. And just as a point of information, again, anybody who clicks on the special event motions can see, and there are a number that are always reimbursed, just glancing, thirty-two-O, thirty-two-K, thirty-two-D, and others as well. So it's there in the motion language that often the expenses are listed, but they are reimbursed by anybody who's a for-profit entity is there. If we can open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, do you wish to take up item fifteen at this time?
Item fifteen, no, let's move ahead, please, to thirty-six. I think we had a request for forty-eight out of order as well, so let's go to thirty-six, please.
The amending motion has been circulated on item thirty-six.
All right. Anybody wishing to be heard on thirty-six? Not, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, that is approved. Go to forty-five, please. And Mr. Parks called that special? We have item number forty-five, Mr. Parks, that is before us now. Item forty-five? This is the year-end adjustment financial status report.
Mr. President, could you have the CEO, please? Good morning.
Good morning.
I just would like you to walk us through your report and where we are as we do the year-end closeout and weapon package to have on whole seven oh eight.
Yes, good morning. You have before you the year-end financial status report somewhat earlier than usual, and that is in order to accommodate an impending shutdown of our supply management system for maintenance. I'd also like to take the opportunity to introduce Maria Gutierrez, who comes to us actually from working with the council on the Budget and Finance Committee. She's our new FSR analyst, and obviously, we're going to benefit greatly from her experience. As this is an early deadline and given the fact that we are currently in the midst of budget deliberations, I do want to acknowledge the extraordinary efforts of many of our city departments who are giving us information for the report. Basically, in the mid-year report, you'll recall that we estimated over expenditures of approximately forty-one-point-three million. That estimate has now increased by five-point-seven million to forty-six million, and the increase is primarily attributable to workers' compensations costs, which topped out at eleven-point-six million in March. We're recommending adjustments to address the estimated year-end deficit by utilizing approximately two-point-four million in departmental surpluses and seven-hundred-eight-thousand from the unappropriated balance. In addition, we are recommending a transfer of eighteen-point-nine million from the reserve fund to cover these deficits. I want to just kind of briefly highlight where we are on revenue. And we had some good news and some bad news. And the basic bad news came in the form of our property tax receipts being lower than we anticipated, and also a lower-than-anticipated documentary transfer tax receipts. However, these lower receipts were offset by healthy increases in business tax and healthy increases in licenses, permits, and fees. We also had about a four-million-dollar under-budget performance in terms of sales tax. On the reserve fund, we are expecting to end the year at approximately two-hundred-and-sixty-four million. I believe that the report you have in front of you has a number of two-hundred-and-seventy-three, but as reported in our Budget and Finance Committee report, it appears that nine-point-six million of reimbursable costs for the police department have already been accounted for. And so we will have to make adjustments when we see the year-end cash balance after the close of the fiscal year. So as opposed to the two-hundred-and-seventy-three-point-eight, we expect to have a reserve fund balance of approximately two-hundred-and-sixty-four. I also want to take the opportunity to address the issue of costs associated with the Griffith Park fire. As departments were instructed to get us the costs that they incurred in responding to the fire as of the close of business yesterday, we're currently analyzing those responses, and we expect to report back to the city council on the costs associated with the fire, and those amounts eligible for reimbursement through various disaster programs within about four weeks. Given that, we're happy to take any questions relative to the report.
Let me ask you, on the issue of the new instructions added by the committee, what the issue which we have been successful the last two to three years not having a freeze, but could you comment on the instruction number three of the committee report?
Yes. We were asked by the committee to examine what the fiscal impact would be of implementing a hiring freeze for the month of June, June first, through the end of the fiscal year. Our preliminary analysis indicates that savings generated by such an action would be approximately one million dollars, of which approximately six-hundred-and-forty-thousand would impact the general fund. The remaining four-hundred-thousand would be impacts on special funds.
And then also the issues that, also the added instruction about the realignment of the police academy classes.
Right now, we are basically looking at the realignment, saving approximately two-point-five million. That's consistent with what was actually reported in the Budget and Finance Committee hearing as a, as a recommendation in the chief legislative analyst's report.
Okay. And then also, the expectation is that we're not eliminating the class of oh-seven-oh-eight, but we're really rearranging them to come with the same overall number?
Yes, it would be having smaller classes at the beginning of the fiscal year and then making larger classes available at the end of the fiscal year.
With that configuration of smaller classes elevated through the year, does that save additional funds as to our oh-seven-oh-eight and how we would fund those classes?
I'm just looking at Mr. Luther to see if we have a different estimate. I believe we're still at the two-point-five.
Two-point-five?
We'd certainly be happy to get back to you with more detail as the council considers the budget next week.
And then also, could you comment on the main areas of why we went into deficit at the end of this year?
Again, one of the major areas that continues to be a challenge for us from a cost perspective is workers' compensation. We actually are closing, last month had, I believe, about eleven million dollars of additional workers' compensation costs. So that is going to continue to be a challenge for us. In addition, General Services Department, you may recall that in the mid-year, we did take nine million out of the unappropriated balance to cover petroleum costs, but they are now estimating that they will need an additional three million dollars as a result of increases in gas prices to cover their petroleum issues. Police Department, unreimbursable overtime was about four million dollars, and then we do have, we have overtime issues also in Department of Transportation, and those are primarily related to special events.
With those issues dealing with workers' comp, petroleum, and such, what are, maybe give the council a little preview, what are some of the things that are being looked at in order to try to rein in some of those costs?
Well, I believe the chief legislative analyst's report that was reported out to Budget and Finance Committee yesterday, and which will be in front of the council on Friday, does look at taking a number of what I will call financial management actions in terms of more regular reporting in the coming fiscal year. As I mentioned at this table before, the report references the CEO's commitment to having bimonthly financial status reports, and what the committee is recommending is that those status reports be much more comprehensive in looking at position changes, personnel issues in terms of what positions need to maintain to keep departments within their salary budgets, also looking at expenditures quickly, and it also calls and it also calls out specific reporting on overtime by departments.
Okay. The other issues that, in dealing with this particular report, on the nine-point-some-six million dollars, and the reason for that shortfall is that we've already taken credit for it?
We've already accounted for that.
Now, what is the expectation of resolving that between now and June?
Well, our expectation is that we would resolve it as part of the first financial status report because between now and June thirtieth, we will be receiving additional revenue and cash receipts. We may also have expenditures that we were not able to accurately predict. So, once we have the books closed, we'll look at what our cash balances are, and if we need to make adjustments in terms of the reserve fund, we'd come back with a recommendation at that time.
And what is the timing on the first status report?
My understanding, and I'm looking to staff, is we will not have the fiscal year-end close numbers on a preliminary basis until August. So, we wouldn't be looking at coming back either the end of August, when the council returns, or the first part of September.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, there's a motion on your desk, this amendment. Essentially, the money is there. CRA has the money. It's about process. I'm asking to transfer five-hundred thousand for the bandshell in MacArthur Park. This is a bandshell that has been dilapidated for decades. It's been shut down for seven years. We now have a contractor who's ready to work, ready to move. There's five-hundred thousand that we put back into the general fund. I'm asking for our ability to move this money so that we can get the project done now. Currently, we have hundreds of families, hundreds of kids going to this park. We know what we've been through the past couple of weeks. We cannot be sending mixed signals. We need to show the folks in the area that we do care for them, that we do support them. Currently, you have sixteen-hundred kids in a soccer league in MacArthur Park playing on dirt. But this focus right now is about the bandshell. I'm hoping with time, you can put an artificial field and/or a natural field to make sure the kids don't have to be playing on dirt. These are third-world positions in our own district, in our own city. It shouldn't be this way. The bottom line is, the money is there. I'm asking for your support to get the construction going today. I ask for a high vote on this amendment. Thank you very much. The money is there.
Mr. Labons is next.
I'd like to support Mr. Reyes on this issue of MacArthur Park, one of the most busiest spots in all of Los Angeles. And the fields need to be fields. They don't need to be dirt. They're so popular, they're down to the dirt. I only suggest that we make sure we do geo, good geotextes. Lake, as you know, had used to be on the north side of Wilshire before Wilshire went through. But this is something we should support. And the bandshell, it creates a great space there. I'm still, and I hope others remember our great meeting that we had out there as council members, and I remember walking south on Parkview to overlook the lake and see what transformation is done there with your leadership, Ed, the help of Rampart Area and LAPD, the Park Rangers, John Muckry. This is just further on that. So, now is the time to help MacArthur Park. I know everyone, wherever they live, will enjoy MacArthur Park as Langer celebrates its sixtieth anniversary coming out. They should walk and watch young people play on sports fields and visit the bandshell that it was meant to be.
Tom, what number is a pastrami with Swiss cheese and Russian dressing?
Mr. City Attorney advised me not to answer that question.
Mr. Parks?
Let me ask Mr. Reyes. I don't think there's a problem in the sense of understanding the public works. Trust Fund does have the money. But in paragraph two, it's unclear whether Wreckin' Park has the funds to be paid by July thirty-first because unless you have knowledge that we don't, because I think most Wreckin' Park was swept as we...
The CRA has also committed to reimburse us. They can get that?
Okay, so the CRA, I mean, that's something I think we need to verify because we know from Wreckin' Park, I don't believe they have those funds that can make that commitment from what we know of what happened on the budget. If CRA is saying they have the funds and they can give us that account, I think we can attach that. But without that, it's a kind of a promise that we don't know where the repayment is. No one disagrees that it should be repaired.
What do I need to do to make sure the cash flow loan is real?
The issue is, what we need to make it real is who's going to repay it and what account number is coming out of. So, there's no misunderstanding that the repayment is going to happen.
Can we put this over for Friday? Fine, we can get that information to you, and that way we can nail this down.
We get this amended, but the key is what the repayment's going to be?
As long as we get that thing done, we'll go, do it for Friday. I appreciate that.
Just for clarification, I'm assuming that would just be the motion that moves to Friday, not the approval. Thank you.
Yes, don't worry.
A lot of departments are waiting.
Friday, we'll bring it back Friday with that information.
Okay, there's no objection. We'll continue that until Friday. Thank you very much. Next, if...
Mr. President, a vote is actually needed on the item forty-five.
Sorry?
A vote is actually needed on item forty-five, which is the Budget and Finance Committee report.
So, we're just continuing that one piece of it?
Correct.
All right, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Bye-bye.
That is approved, and forty-five A will go over till Friday. Thank you. Next, we'll take up item forty-eight. We'll come back to fifteen following that. And we have a number of speaker cards for this. I'll ask folks to try to keep their comments to a minute, considering the volume of cards that we have. We have, I believe, ten cards on the against side. We have about fifteen cards on the foreside here. So, we'll start here, the foreside. Larry Gross is our first speaker, and then Shashi Hanuman and Barbara Schultz will be the first three speakers.
Larry Gross, Coalition for Economic Survival. So, I see the struggling mom-pop landlords are here today. We support this ordinance. The Ellis Act provides landlords a right to go out of the rental business. The landlords who use the Ellis Act to evict tenants, demolish RSO buildings, and then build new rental housing are scamming to get out of rent control and are essentially breaking the law. There must be no exemptions. Why would you want to reward lawbreakers who have displaced tenants, destroyed rent-controlled housing, and added to our affordable housing crisis? There's no way it violates the cost of Hawkins Law. It complies with the Ellis Act. The affordable housing options should be strengthened, though. We propose a one-for-one replacement clause without a twenty percent cap. We urge adoption of this ordinance without the exemptions and put a stop to the lawbreakers in this town. Thank you.
Thank you, Shashi Hanuman, who's our next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Shashi Hanuman. I'm with Public Council Law Center. Public Council supports item forty-eight because it closes a loophole in local law that lets landlords use Ellis to evict tenants when they say that they're exiting the rental market but then re-rent those units in five years. The truth is, this ordinance does not go far enough. Ellis actually allows the new rents to be limited based on the rental rate, in effect, at the time of the notice of termination. With this ordinance, the owner can set the initial rate at whatever the market will bear. We fail to see the hardship for smaller buildings justifying their exemption in this context. At past hearings, Council has urged a comprehensive scheme to address the housing crisis. This is one small, integral part of that scheme, and it is consistent with the city's housing element, given that the city's housing element relies on the RSO as a mandatory program to meet the needs of all segments of society. Finally, the twenty percent exemption for buildings that include affordable housing will promote both the dual goals in the housing element of producing and preserving housing. Thank you.
Thank you, and Barbara Schultz?
Good morning. Barbara Schultz, Legal Aid Foundation of Los Angeles. I'm here to speak against any exemptions to this policy. As it is, if this is passed, developers will have the choice to put the new units under the RSO at market rate or covenant a few units as affordable and get a free ride on the rest. The Ellis Act protects landlords who no longer want to be landlords, not those that simply want to remove themselves from rent control. As Council President Garcetti pointed out yesterday, these are developers who signed affidavits saying that they were going permanently out of the rental business. And here they are, less than five years later, wanting handouts for new units. Sixty-five percent of RSO buildings are three units or less, the number of the exemption, representing a significant number of units that would be exempted. Don't allow an exception to swallow the rule. Vote no on any exemption to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next three speakers are from the against side, Veronica Perez Becker and Kevin Cozal, followed by Ken Cahen.
Veronica Perez Becker, CCA. We understand and share the city's motivation to preserve and increase affordable housing stock. CCA and other business organizations are currently working on such a proposal that we will present to the city council soon. There is no loophole to be closed here. The provision of the Ellis Act that gives municipalities the discretion to extend rent control to certain new construction is optional. This city made a policy decision in nineteen-seventy-eight not to extend rent control to new construction, and doing so today would exacerbate our housing crisis by weakening supply. It would dissuade construction of energy-efficient buildings with higher density and runs counter to the goals of the mayor, planning, and city council to increase density in the right places, like transit corridors. It would give those already hesitant to invest in our city another reason to stay away, sending a message that we are expanding rent control when other major cities are phasing it out. The loophole argument also does not consider scenarios where the property switches hands and new rental is constructed by another owner. We want, please put this in the year-long study on rent control. Thank you.
Kevin Cozal?
Good morning, Kevin Cozal. I've previously submitted letters and spoken explaining why this ordinance is unlawful and violation of the cost of Hawkins. I'm not going to repeat those today. I want to address the alleged loophole issue. This was addressed at HCD yesterday. It was in the LA Times today. There is no loophole. I submitted to this council yesterday the notice signed by landlords, the city-prepared notice. It does not say they're permanently going out of business. It simply says they intend to demolish or withdraw those units from rent control. There is absolutely nothing fraudulent or unlawful about Ellis-ing and building new units. I'd like you to really consider exactly what you're trying to accomplish with this ordinance. It's not advancing housing. It's not advancing affordable housing. All it's doing is prohibiting the redevelopment of underutilized and outdated properties, and that's not good housing policy, and we urge you not to adopt this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Ken?
Hi, Ken Cahen. I'm an LA native who's passionate about LA. I care about development. I care about tenant issues, and I care about the production of housing. Things are moving a little quickly. City Attorney is not going to be here for a couple of weeks. That's why this matters in front of you. It could wait a couple of weeks. Examples of problems that are not addressed here. Is it a hundred percent clear it doesn't apply to condos? Is it clear what happens with respect to vested rights? What about the Mellow Act and what happens in those instances? What if there's a condo owner who later rents? These are policy decisions that need to be thought about. If the goal is to eliminate new rental housing, what's the real short-term net effect to the property owners and pricing? If promoting housing is the key, why not specifically allow SB eighteen-eighteen to apply as opposed to what's in front of you right now? I think everyone wants to incentivize and promote new housing, and if they could also be sensitive to existing tenant issues, so be it. The bottom line is, there's a lot of issues that require thought before action. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to call the next three speakers, Tim O'Connell, Deborah Burton,
Seems like a long walk. My name is Tim O'Connell. I'm with Century Housing Corporation, a nonprofit housing development and finance organization. Century Housing doesn't believe that rent control should be our only tool. We should have a full toolbox. As Council has done a lot of great things to fill our toolbox, things like development incentives, things like the housing trust fund. You're to be congratulated. But you made a policy decision that existing housing should be subject to rent control. The Ellis Act provides some guarantees to property owners. Those guarantees should remain in place. But those property owners are regulated by your regulation. They should be subject to rent control. If they remove those properties under the Ellis Act and they go back into the rental business, they should be subject to your rent control ordinance on a one-for-one basis. That would not slow down new development. It would not slow down redevelopment of underutilized sites. It simply says you have to follow the rules. It should have absolutely no impact, and it would be completely equitable and fair. Thank you very much.
My name is Deborah Burton, and I'm a member of the Los Angeles Community Action Network. LA Hand is here in support of the local ordinance to close one of the loopholes in the Ellis Act and to oppose any exemption to this ordinance. The new policy will provide more protection for tenants of Los Angeles, like myself. It does not expand rent control or put any burdens on landlords. It simply prevents landlords from using the Ellis Act illegally. Los Angeles must take every opportunity to protect our housing and our tenants because we are facing the worst housing crisis we've ever seen. I work full-time and far above the supposed living wage, and there are still a few places I can afford to live. And there are hundreds of thousands more like myself living in rent-controlled apartments who need the city to stand up for our rights. Again, we urge you to pass the ordinance that closed the loopholes that hurts tenants and our housing stock. We urge you not to allow any exemption, no matter what the size of the bill is.
Thank you. Joe?
Would the tenants who are here please rise? These are the faces of the people who are at a point of losing their homes. They're not here for their jobs. They're not here because they're worried about making less money. They're here because they're worried about losing their homes. The intent of the Ellis Law is to allow owners to leave the housing market, not to go to the housing department, invoke the Ellis Law, say that they're going to leave the market, and then turn around the next year with a newly-built apartment. We are asking for no exemptions. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speakers are Linda Hollenbeck, Jim Clark, and Ron Bodoin.
Hello, my name is Linda Hollenbeck, and I'm the managing partner with Kimball Tyree in St. John, a law firm that represents landlords. I represent probably most major management companies within the state of California. And my client's goal is to provide quality rental housing. They provide quality rental housing. They do not need control as on them to provide quality rental housing. With regard to the Ellis Act, everybody who's come before me for the most part has misstated what the Ellis Act is. The Ellis Act specifically states it allows a landlord to remove specific units from rental housing use. My landlord is paying substantial relocation to tenants who are relocated so that they can demolish and rebuild quality rental housing. It is an illegal provision to expect our landlords and all of my clients to be forced to remain in business on a building that is old and a building that is dilapidated as opposed to removing those units from rental housing use and rebuilding quality rental housing.
Good morning, members of the city council. Thanks for the opportunity. I'm Jim Clark with the Apartment Association of Greater Los Angeles, representing thirty thousand owners and managers. My members are not going to go out of business and demolish their buildings to build new apartments, especially if they're good buildings. If they do decide to go out of business and demolish, they're doing it because they do want to get out and they want to sell their property. And if I happen to be a developer that wants to buy that property and build a new apartment building on it, I can't because it's going to be subject to rent control. So, right there, you have just disincentivized the building of new apartments. I think the choice would be to build condominiums. So, there goes your affordable housing right there. I think we ought to stay closer to home and work on the problems that we've got here. Section eight needs to be fixed. Nonprofit housing needs to be more scrutinized. And we need to have non-conforming units out there permitted and let the people that are living in them stay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you, council members, for the opportunity to speak. My name is Ron Bodwin. I'm the chair of the Advisory Board for California Apartment Association. I'm here representing the apartment industry, developers, and related businesses. Would you folks stand with me, please? We're just here to steadfastly display our opposition to any expansion on rent. We're just here to steadfastly display our opposition to any expansion on rent control. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next three speakers, Kenya Alcoer, it looks like Leonardo Vilches, and Roger Peña. Kenya? Good morning.
I'm here in behalf of the people, Acorn, and all the people that are falling into this same problem of living conditions throughout the city, and also in support of the protection of the buildings that have been designated to be torn down due to the Long Sharks investors. I, furthermore, I'd like to make a comment. I think you all should be very proud of the way you look every day in the morning. Are you looking at yourself in the mirror? I think you should remember those people at that point. Because this is what you have, or you will have more people in the city running around without housing, without a place to live. And there's no surprise to me, you having so many people marching down the streets is due to the lack of what you don't do as far as your responsibilities in the city hall.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for your attention.
Could you give me your name for the record, sir? Your name, sir?
Ah, sorry.
That's okay.
Roger Peña.
Okay, Roger, thank you.
Roger Peña.
Next?
Morning, my name is Leonardo Vilches, and I'm coming here for Unión de Vecinos. Over the last year, we've been visiting about 3,000 people in our community. That is 75% renters. Most of them live in two, three, and four-unit complexes, and we're very concerned about this. We don't want any amendments to this proposal. I'm here to support it, but any amendment would be for us aiding or abetting a crime. These people are using the law to turn housing into rental and make a profit out of it and pushing people out of our community, people who are barely making $25,000 to $30,000 a year. So we are in support of this proposal, and we don't want any amendments.
Hello, my name is Kenya, and I also work with Unión de Vecinos. And one of the things that we're noticing, Ball Heights alone has lost about 1,500 units of affordable housing. I wonder how much more we're losing in LA. And one of the things we want is we don't want to lose any more affordable housing. We already are losing, landlords already illegally evicting tenants. And by allowing them to now legally victim and bring housing that is more expensive for them, it's just a crime. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next three speakers, Tara Bannister, followed by Vic Vier.
Buenos días. Apartamento de Concesales. Y estas son mis, estas personas. Aquí a mi izquierda son miembros de, pues siento que estamos viendo aquí por primera vez. Y ese es la respuesta que tuve ayer acerca de toda la ciudad de 16 personas que quieren parar el control de rentas. Entonces permiten. Y en estos estados sin ninguna forma de control.
We do believe that what you would do with this is a violation of state law, and we have every intention to sue if you do pass this. Again, we stand very firmly against rent control. Rent control is not necessarily affordable housing. It doesn't necessarily help the low-income, the same way that Section 8 does, or low-income tax credit properties. Thank you for your consideration. Thank you.
Good morning, council members. For the tenants who are complaining and have the affordable housing problems, this fits very well, or the problems fit very well under the phrase of be careful what you ask for, you may get it. Well, they've asked for it, and they've gotten it, the problems. The city of Los Angeles is having budget problems, a shortage of affordable housing, and proliferation of gangs. Considering how the city council has been voting on rental problems, housing policies, it's no surprise. When owners try to fix up their property and rehab it, they're penalized at least 50% of the amount of money they put into it. No wonder that property is deteriorating. If you want to have more affordable housing, preserving it, and not undermine the city's budget, and you want to grow jobs, thousands of jobs could be created by changing your whole strategy. This 48 has to be opposed. Thank you.
Thank you. George Milston? George Milston? Okay, Tony Hoagobri?
Good morning, council members. Thank you for taking the time to hear me. My name is Tony Hoagobri. I'm a senior operations manager for Archstone Smith. You all support affordable housing, clearly. We build, own, and manage affordable housing. I'd like to find a way that we can all work together to provide it to the public who sorely need it in the city of Los Angeles. We oppose this proposal. There are many good reasons to tear down old, 50-year-old, inefficient, non-energy-efficient, dilapidated buildings and to replace it with brand-new, nice product, higher density, twice as many units, higher supply, lower prices. These are good ways to provide affordable housing to the citizens of the city of Los Angeles. This proposal would have the effect of pushing affordable housing projects into surrounding cities like Glendale, Pasadena, Orange County, Long Beach, and making it more difficult to build additional affordable housing in Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. Alyssa Barrett, Thelma Meredith, and Makrina León.
Alyssa Barrett from Betsetic Legal Services. This is not about extending or destroying rent control. This discussion is about enacting lawful provisions that are still valid from state law. They are not preempted by Costa-Hawkins. As I testified yesterday in the Housing Committee, the law abhors implied repeal of any provision. The Ellis Act was amended twice. In fact, the very specific provision that we're dealing with here was amended twice in '99 and 2002. Those amendments dealt with clarifying the scope of that provision of the Ellis Act. At no time was this provision repealed, so it is clear that it still stands. In addition, many of the lobbyists that you're hearing from today have exhorted the council on repeated basis that the Ellis Act prevents you from doing anything to extend the reach of affordable housing in Los Angeles, and yet now they would have you ignore the language of the Ellis Act that helps preserve our housing. Thank you so much.
Good morning, council members. My name is Thelma Meredith, and I'm in Herb West and neighborhood. I live in an apartment, and I've been there for 42 years. Lo and behold, one day we get a letter from the people that are managing the place that they are demolishing the property, and they gave us 60 days to move out. And I got this letter from them, from the LA Housing, that it became legal April the 11th, that they would give us four months. This man came one day, and he told me they signed this contract before the 11th of April. And so now, when he came to collect the rent, he asked me, "When are you moving?" I said, "When I find a place and we get our relocation money." He says, "I left an appraisal letter there for you on your door, and you weren't home. Where is it?" I said, "I didn't see anything." He says, "Look for it."
We could ask you just to conclude. Okay, thank you very much.
Me llamo Makrina León, y vengo.
Good afternoon. Good morning, my name is Makrina León.
Vengo a apoyar a las víctimas de desalojo.
And I'm here to support the victims of evictions.
Yo soy una víctima de desalojo.
I am a victim of eviction.
Y quiero que voten a favor de la gente trabajadora.
And I want you to vote for the working people.
Yo estoy aquí en apoyo de, a los que no vinieron. Para defender sus derechos, porque trabajan. Para sus viviendas.
I'm here to support the working, I'm here representing the working-class people who had to work for the money that they have to pay rent for, and they couldn't be here to support this because they work.
Thank, you want to say that one last sentence?
¿Una última cosa? ¿Cómo que sus? Sus.
Yeah.
Okay. Muchas gracias, thank you. Our next speaker, the last three speakers we have, James Sur, Felicitas Vargas, and Betsy Handler.
Good morning, council members. I'm Jim Sur, a developer here. To remind us all that we do have a housing crisis, we urgently need new affordable rental housing. We also need new affordable for-sale housing. And I urge you to not support this Ellis item. This will not serve to promote housing supply, and ultimately it will have the effect of forcing those who work in our city to move farther away to find housing they can afford. And I urge you to also support Councilmember Parks' amendment. I believe that there should be an exception, and I think that it is reasonable to have that be an exception for four units or less. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Vargas?
Buenos días. Mi nombre es Felicitas Vargas.
My name is Felicitas Vargas.
Vivo en el 2414, North Eastern Avenue, Los Ángeles.
I live in 2414 Northeastern Avenue, Los Ángeles.
Soy miembro de Acorn.
I am a member of Acorn.
Vengo a apoyar la propuesta 48.
I'm here to support item 48.
Y quiero que se cumpla con la ley.
And I want the law to be invited by.
De que las viviendas que sean destruidas.
That the housing that is destroyed.
Sean reemplazadas por viviendas económicas.
Be replaced by economic living.
Para las personas de bajos recursos.
For people of low income and affordable housing.
Yo estoy pasando por este problema.
I'm going through this problem myself.
Y tengo el desalojo para el 15 de junio.
My building, I am to be evicted on the 15th of June due to demolition.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It's now afternoon. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Betsy Handler. I'm the director of legal services of the Inner City Law Center. Excuse me. You've heard many arguments for passage of this motion without exemptions. I support all of these arguments. I wish to remind you that this is not something that's being imposed on landlords. This deals with people who have told the city that they voluntarily want to exit the rental housing market and then who, within five years, come back and build new rental housing at much, much higher rents. That is called fraud. I mean, let's be frank about it. So please, pass the original motion and don't have any exemptions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That closes public comment. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and thank you to everybody from both sides of this issue, with the for and against people for being here, especially people who are coming here for the first time, who have never testified here before. And while we're going to narrow the discussion in a moment about what we are talking about here today, I know that whenever we talk about housing in Los Angeles, it evokes so many emotions on different sides of the issue. It evokes a lot of things of what we have to do comprehensively, and it's one of the reasons I really appreciate the tenant advocates, the landlord advocates, who have been a part of a larger discussion. So make no mistake that today is not about our overall housing policy. We've worked very closely with CAA and AGLA and CCA, Acorn, and others to ensure, for instance, that things like granny flat units are legalized. It's something I'm very passionate about in my own district and would love to continue to work on, that we're looking at nonprofit housing developers, as was brought up before, and now, under the leadership of Mercedes Marquez's general manager, I think she just told me last round, it was 60 or 70% of the folks who are building affordable housing are for-profit entities, not just the nonprofit ones. There's a lot of great things that are happening here, that there's been unanimity around Proposition H campaign, which I think was a mandate for continuing funding for affordable housing, even though it was a couple percentages underneath. We've worked closely with landlord groups to ensure that there's shared costs moving forward, whether it was recycling, whether it's on spiking utility rates, which was legislation we introduced, to help make sure that the business model can work. And we know that the providers and the users of affordable housing are both critical parts of the picture as we move forward. That said, I want to kind of give folks a little history around the horseshoe of what we're talking about here today. In 2002, as part of a joint group that brought together business leaders, tenant advocates, faith groups, academics, and others, there was a series of recommendations on how we can help preserve affordable housing in Los Angeles. Out of that, a 2003 renovation study called for a number of different things, which we can agree to disagree, whether it's closing loopholes, whether some of them are enforcing existing laws. Some of them were about building new things, and some of them were about using the market to incentivize exactly what we want to see, more increased investment here in Los Angeles. And while we're so far behind of where we need to be, it is heartening to know that in Los Angeles, where our general plan says we should be building 10,000 units of housing each year, and we are at about 5,000 for over a decade. This past year, we're at 15,000 in the pipeline, and we might get as high as 20,000 this year, both rental and for-sale units that are really going quite aggressively forward. The committee twice has voted on this unanimously, and we've had unanimity on, I would say, 99% of what we're talking about today, though we may have some that agree to disagree on that. And I know that was brought up, and I'll get to that in a second, about whether there should be any exemption. But what this is about, pretty straightforwardly, is as we've had before, somebody who signs an affidavit saying that they are going to exit the rental market, and then, within five years, decide, you know, they're going to build for-sale, which allows them, under law, to exit that, change their mind. If we took away for a second that this was about anything to do with rent control, it would be the equivalent of if we made people who are building in a place that's zoned for four stories, that they sign an affidavit that, according to the zoning, they're going to build four stories, and then later on said, "Actually, I'd like to do that eight stories." Now, of course, the market would give more profit to that. I hear the argument that, of course, you get more, and that would incentivize people to build, but we zone the city in some places four stories because that's what the law is, and that's what we agree upon as a value. We are not, as was mentioned by somebody, debating today whether we expand rent control, whether we abolish it. I want to say that very clearly. There is no net gain of new rent-controlled units that would come out of this under any scenario, nor should there be, if we do this right, much of a loss unless they become for-sale units. In committee yesterday, somebody brought up the example, "How does this play out?" you might be asking, of an eight-unit building right now that was under rent stabilization. The rents might have been, let's say, $750. And one of the things we are working on, which is why Mr. Parks and I are moving forward along with this council on the fee study, is right now we have a system that disincentivizes good landlords because you keep your tenants longer and those rents stay lower. Bad landlords, who are good at turning people over, get to kick their rents up, and that seems to be a little perverse reward or punishment of good landlords. That said, let's say it was $750 for each of these eight units. If they, and with the examples brought up, in a place that's zoned now to be able to build 20 units, it was asked, "What would happen to us?" Well, under what we've put forward here, you could either replace those eight units, but at market rent, even though they would then be stabilized, so they might go from $750 to $1,500 or $2,000. The other 12 units that would be built under that new zoning would be at market rate and would go up with the market. Or, if you wanted, you could actually reduce the number of units that were quote-unquote "affordable" because you could make 20% of the new units affordable under our usual laws. So four units could be affordable in perpetuity at a lower level. So, to me, either way, there's a net gain and an incentive in the marketplace to do the investment. I know there's more profit if we don't have that rule, but it seems to be also the right thing to do to keep people in neighborhoods. When we ask ourselves why we have the worst traffic in the country, the worst pollution, it's because people are living further and further away from their jobs, and we aren't stabilizing and keeping people in communities. It's pretty straightforward what that does, and we've worked very closely with CCA, with CAA, with the landlord groups, to add a number of things to assist, whether it's CAA, with the landlord groups, to add a number of things to assist, whether it's bond financing, because when you do 20 percent, you get state funding now, which is a great option for the investor, to be able to get state money to essentially build that affordable housing, or whether it's the option of going in replacement units or being able to do affordable units, usually at a lower level, just to be clear. So those have been big gives, and I appreciate working closely with those groups. I know then when they've come up here, they say oppose at 100 percent. Traditionally, when we've worked together, we've had a lot of people come say, we're not happy with everything, but we do appreciate what has changed, and I'm sorry we haven't heard that here. But with the folks that are also from the tenant groups that are here as well today, you know, they wanted one-to-one replacement no matter what, and that's not in here. So before anybody paints this as something that is totally in a different direction, let's be clear what was sacrificed on that part as well. So what we have here, I think, is something that arrives upon whether or not we can agree to not debate whether we're abolishing rent control, whether we're expanding rent control. The net of this is enforcing the law. And I know I'm a little bit over, but I wanted to ask Mercedes Marquez a couple questions. If I could ask her to come forward as our general manager to the table to ask just a quick series of questions as well. And again, you know, I think while we have lawyers that are going to be on both sides of this, I really want us to depend on our city staff, who we ask to be the ones who are the housing experts for us, that we pay the professionals and our city attorney to look at what we can and should be doing. Ms. Marquez, could you explain the process by which a rental property is currently Ellis?
Yes, sir. Landlords who wish to remove their property, in other words, go out of business, come to the Housing Department, and they fill out this form. It's called a landlord declaration, and it is called notice of intent to withdraw units from rental housing use.
So while some may not like that law, and others may love it or want to expand it, it is the law today that that's what, that if you want to take something out of rent control, you can do that by moving to a for-sale product?
Absolutely.
But this is a signature saying, I want to do that, that's my intent, and as the law is today, you can't make that, convert that into, you can't go out of rent control to tomorrow create market-rate rental units?
Correct.
Is this law meant to deal solely with individuals who either changed their minds or provided false information in the first place? When the housing, this didn't, this wasn't, just to be clear, as much as we might all want to claim credit or oppose this, this was initiated from the Housing Department, from our own studies here. When this moved forward, was the law meant to deal solely with individuals who either changed their minds or who provide false information?
Yes.
Is it necessary to include an exemption for both number of units that are demolished as well as the number constructed? I think that might no longer be an issue, but I think we took the language at.
It is not.
So it's really for the demolished one. And one of the things that I've talked closely with Mr. Parks about too, is he has said about the mom-and-pops that are out there, that are three or four plex units, that it's not the only problem. I know that's what we heard about, but I want to be clear today, folks, we can maybe talk about that, which is a very small percentage of the overall units that are being converted, but it is lost units. But it is not just the mom-and-pop owner that has been holding on to something for a while and wants to make sure that investment yields something. Could you describe what is happening on like entire blocks where you might have a series of five or 10 fourplexes?
Well, I've been, in response to some questions I've received from around the horseshoe, thinking about the idea of an exemption for whether it's a fourplex or a triplex or duplex, whatever it is. If I could for a moment, just talk in context. Of the 620,000 units that are within the rent stabilization ordinance, 30 percent of them are made up of duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes. So that is 180,000 units would fall into that category of what we're talking about. Right. Under the language that I have seen, the exemption is not focused on the owner in terms of being a mom-and-pop, someone who, when I think of mom-and-pop, and certainly we have programs in the Housing Department directed at these very particular type of landlords. Folks who own one triplex, they're the owner-occupant, they live in one of the units, the rental income that they receive is part of their retirement income. Okay. So there is the idea of an exemption so that if they sell that building that they live in, they're exempted from any of this. But then, of course, there are parts, many parts of the city, and this was discussed yesterday, that are made up of a neighborhood of duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes. So if you go forward with an exemption that applies to the unit type as opposed to the person type, the landlord type that's a mom-and-pop, people could go in and buy fourplex after fourplex after fourplex after fourplex in order to assemble land to do a very large building and get the exemption. And so I guess what...
And to you, that goes against the spirit of what the Housing Department's trying to accomplish?
Well, certainly. It goes against the spirit of if there would be an exemption from a mom-and-pop, someone who really, this is their rental income. It goes against them having speculators and people who are not mom-and-pops at all but are large developers, going in to buy one building after another that are made up of duplexes and triplexes, putting them together and now building a very large building, having exempted themselves completely.
And Mr. Garcetti, if you may be your last question, then we'll push the button again?
Last question, then I'll push it again. And one last thing, even before we talk about, you know, the character or the possibility of any exemption, I know, is there a hardship exemption currently as this is written, and how would that work? Because I think people have put out there sometimes some straw men about what this actually is and what it would actually do, and could you describe that?
There is a hardship exemption that is already proposed, and the purpose of the exemption is for those, for those, whether developers or owners or whoever they are that are involved in the purchase of a property, so that for the 90-day period in between effectiveness, anyone that is in process has a track map, purchased it under the old idea that they would have this hardship exemption, and they would be exempted from the law under it. So there is already contemplated that for those that are in transition and were not put on notice of it, that they would come within that safe harbor, so to speak, and would not be affected by these new regulations.
Thank you, I'll press my button in a little bit. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam President. Let me just ask the general manager, just on clarity on this issue of the number of buildings that would be in that three to four unit. Have we studied that, or do we have some idea, I guess comes from SCAP?
We do.
Okay, how many would we be talking about?
In terms of units, the total number of buildings, so let's start with properties first. The total number of properties that are a combination of duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes are 118,642 properties in the city of Los Angeles are those. That's the total of all of them together.
Okay, that's number, are they all in rent stabilization?
Yes, these are all of those that are within rent stabilization.
So it's 100-plus thousand of the 700,000?
Of the 620,000 units that are in rent control, 180,000 units are either, are a sum of duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes. So about 30 percent of the units that are in rent stabilization fall into this small building category.
When you say units, are you referring to individual structures or number of living spaces?
When I say units, I mean individual apartments.
So individual structures?
Yeah, well, they don't know, it could be, it could be a duplex, it's one structure, but it has two units in it.
I mean, but when you say the hundred, the 30 percent, are we talking units as buildings? Are we saying living quarters?
Oh, actually, the 30 percent is of apartment units. If I were to respond in terms of properties, it is actually a total of 75 percent of the buildings in Los Angeles that are in rent control are either duplexes, triplexes, or fourplexes.
So I just want to clarify, go over that again now, because the difference between, when you say units, the difference between living spaces versus buildings, could you go over that again?
Yes, certainly. The building is, if you have an apartment building, and within it, there are three units, that's, I would call that a property.
Property, okay.
Okay, the property. When I speak of the unit is because I'm counting them individually as apartments.
When you use the word unit, you're talking about the living spaces?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yes, so within that, properties, 75 percent of the properties that are under rent stabilization are a sum of a duplex, triplex, or a fourplex. In terms of living spaces, those sum, duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, are actually 30 percent of the housing stock that is within rent stabilization. So this is actually a very important discussion because it's a sizable amount of the rental stock.
And when we talk about properties, would we be able to estimate that at a minimum that 75 percent is at least 30 years old, or I mean, from the date, from 78 and older?
Any, any of the properties that I am mentioning are from, are either 1978 or older. None of them are beyond 1978.
Okay, and so when we look at that figure, that 70-some percent are built before 78, how do we regenerate them if we discourage rebuilding? I mean, at some point, they're going to get to the point that SCAP can't help them.
Well, that all depends on the owner. I'm going to be frank with you, okay. Buildings, if they are well-maintained, if they don't defer maintenance, if they do what good managers do, and most of our landlords do that, right, most of our landlords are good landlords, so I want to make that clear. Those folks have a very real schedule of maintenance, not deferred maintenance, and those buildings, as a result, go through the national process of rehab. You put in new cabinets, you put in new kitchens, you change the plumbing, right? All of those things and the cost of those are contemplated within the rent stabilization scheme, so those can be captured. There, you are correct that inevitably, everything has a life, even if it is well-maintained and folks have done their very best, at some point, it is time for the building to be removed, at some point. That can be, you know, I live in a house that is 70 years old. I maintain it, it's going to be there a long time.
Let me ask you this then, also, when you talk about the pre-maintenance and the schedule?
Yes.
What is our sense of how well people can do that on the current rent stabilization of 3 percent and being able to bring things up to market rate when people move out?
Well, I would say this, sir. This week, it was reported in the LA Times that we have the highest rent levels in the country. So there is nobody else that has higher rents than the city of Los Angeles in the United States. Forbes Magazine this week gave us the distinction of being the least affordable city in the country because 98 percent of Angelenos cannot afford a medium-priced home. When you take a look at that, given costs, they can afford it.
Okay, let me ask you this, have we broke down, in the sense of looking at that figure, how much is driven by rent stabilization, and how many are the units that are not in rent stabilization? We talk about the highest rents.
Well, given the fact that when we were here the last time, when I had the pleasure of speaking with you about this item, these issues, we concluded that the average tenancy for a rent-stabilized apartment is three years. So every three years, every apartment goes up to market. So that means that there is actually, unless someone, and there are those folks, who have lived in apartments for a very, very long time, but that is, but even taking that, the average turnover rate is three years. So that means that rent-stabilized units are actually not far off market rates because they're able to go back up to market every three years. So in our city, because we're not a rent, we actually don't have rent control, right? We have rent stabilization, so that whenever a unit is vacated, it immediately goes up to whatever the market will bear. So for our city, the differential between a rent-stabilized rent and a market rent is not that significant because of the phenomenon of the turnover.
Okay, let me ask you this, is that, do you have the numbers of, we said 600-plus thousand units, how many units do we have that are not in rent stabilization?
We have a total force of about 800,000 units. So we have 180,000 units that are not in rent control at all, rent stabilization.
Okay, and so have we ever looked at what, that 180,000, how it drives the rent variable that you mentioned?
Well, they're subject to the market as well. So what, we do receive reports, and we look at the difference, that's why I know that there's not much of a differential. But what I think is more important is that the units that are being built, it was also reported this week, that we are second only to the city of Dallas in construction of apartment buildings, right? So we actually are doing very well in terms of construction overall. Our problem is that those units are being built for a strata of our economy that can afford a rent that is over $2,000 a month. So this is, becomes now not an issue of the working class. This issue that we're talking about today is actually a middle-class issue. Because if, for example, the 20 percent is taken, and those units, the rest go up to market, no working-class person in the city of Los Angeles will be able to afford those rents. Middle-class families, and frankly, upper-middle-class families will be who are renting those units, not the working class or the working poor.
That's the point I wanted to make, is that with those figures and the fact that someone quotes where the highest location for rentals, do we know what category they're looking at? Are they looking at our entire 800,000? Are they looking at our 180,000 that are not rent?
They're looking at the, they look at the entire body of the units, including those in rent control. And as I said, because they turn over so often, there is very little differential, really, in the market between a rent-stabilized unit, right, and a market unit. It only will change if the market changes. If we have, right now, we have almost a zero vacancy rate. When you move into a market where there is more opportunity, then the very high-level units will also come down because landlords are responding to the market.
But I think one of the things on your averages, and from listening to landlords, what their concern is, you may have that average of what people move out every three years, but it's the landlord that is stuck with the 10 tenants that don't move at all. I think that's the dilemma that you run across that says, what do they do when, as we've received a letter from a young lady that said, I'm the poorest person in the building and I own it? I mean, what do we do in that regard?
Well, that's probably not true, but...
Well, at least their perception, let's just deal with it.
But their perception, I understand. I would say to you that there are those, but if we were to take into account, if we were to take out that group of landlords that have folks who have not moved in 10 years, and you would re-average the round of vacancies, then we may be more like the apartment turns over every year and a half, right? So if you take that group out, that was weighing down the average. So you would actually, instead of three years, have more like a year and a half. So everybody else is very, very close to market because the units turn over so often. So I'm willing to take a look at that, and the rent study will outline it and segment it, and when we see who's who, then we'll be able to take a look at specifics for those folks.
Do you have any sense, in one of the things we had in one of our motions, what impact this ordinance will have on our overall taxation and property tax? Do you have any sense of that? Because that was one of the things that we asked.
I'm not the, I would have to be, I would think, the CLA that would speak to that, but my, I don't, I haven't seen anything that would tell me we have something to be concerned about. For instance, the cities of Oakland, Berkeley, San Francisco, and Santa Monica have all adopted similar items. San Francisco is a large city, and they're doing quite well. Property values have not dropped, right? So they have done something very similar, and there has been no measurable impact to the negative in terms of property values. And as a result, a negative value on taxes because property values are actually rising.
And Mr. Parks, you can, you want to ask your last question, we'll come back to you with your button?
I'll ask one more question, and I'm through for the day.
Don't make promises you can't keep.
So obviously, you sit in committees with...
Yes, I do.
Let me just, now you may be forget my question, but let me just ask, in the sense of your opposition for the exemptions, is that you think it covers too large of a number of the properties, not necessarily, or both units and properties?
No. My concern is that, as I understand it, sir, I was asked to think about how would we protect the small mom-and-pop owner? This fix goes way beyond that mom-and-pop owner and actually would permit anybody to start buying duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes and get an exemption. That's my concern. If we want to protect mom-and-pop, we can find a way to do that. This is actually, the fix that's on the table now is way beyond protecting those people.
Your view is that it's preventive as opposed to actual circumstance?
Yes.
Okay, you're looking at a preventive measure, that you want to prevent that from happening, not that we have information that it's happening now?
Well, this law would...
I mean, in the sense of people buying that kind of property at that level?
Oh, we know, I know of, no, actually, there are actually quite a number of owners in the city of Los Angeles who are very large rental owners, who their whole business is holding duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes.
Mr. Reyes, followed by Mr. Garcetti.
Counselor President, hold my time. I want to ask logistical questions on what we're doing today. I want to make sure we understand what our action is today, if we're going to take any action, and why are we having this discussion today? So I'd like to get some clarity from the clerk. I want to understand what's before us, and if there's going to be a vote, when are we going to take a vote? Because I understand we took some actions in the committee, but then I've just heard that... in the committee, but then I've just heard that that action is not before us today. So before you move my time, I'd like to be very clear what it is we're doing today.
Mr. Reyes? Yes, Mr. Clerk?
What is on the agenda is continued consideration of the housing report and the original ordinance that was continued a number of times. What has been introduced today is items 48A and B, which are amendments to the ordinance, but also, and a new ordinance has been circulated. So I guess it would be up to the council whether they want to substitute this new ordinance for the original one that has been continued for the number of meetings.
Now, there was a committee session yesterday. Where is that work?
That is still in committee. That was not agendized for today's meeting.
So our actions yesterday, because we're hearing from folks about exemptions, no exemptions, we're having this discussion, yet we don't have the body of that information before us today?
Would leave that up to the Chair of the Housing Committee for that scheduling.
Our Chair of Housing Committee? Let's say hello to your brother. All right. I wanted to understand what we were acting on today. According to the clerk, it's up to the Chair to move the action of yesterday's committee to the floor, which is not in front of us today. Yet, the substance of the discussion is about exemptions, is about the triplex, quadruplex, and the impact on our housing. So I want to be clear what we're doing here today.
Well, it's, it's my understanding, and Mr. Garcetti may chime in to help me, is that we were going to take this issue up in its entirety Friday at the earliest, but since we had such a, you know, large crowd today, that we were going to afford them the opportunity to give public testimony. So I was of the belief that no actual votes would take place today. If, if I'm wrong...
That was based on, on what I had been told at first, which was that this was agendized, not, the committee report was not agendized, we couldn't, but if the city clerk is saying that 48A and B are before us, which are the new ordinances, that does give us that option now. I did not know that before.
Then, okay. But, you know, I would, the, these are the Park amendments, the Parks amendments?
They are, yes.
We'll talk about that, we're just raised with Ms. Marquez.
We'd like them to come back on Tuesday when we discuss the whole issue. We wouldn't like them voted on today.
Okay. So this item is chemistry...
I didn't hear that.
Okay, yes.
Can you repeat what he's, I didn't hear. We'd like to have them on Tuesday when we discuss the entire ordinance and matter, rather than dealing with the, the motions today.
So you don't want any action today?
No, no, we want them when we discuss the larger issue Tuesday.
So the committee report, is Mr. Reyes...
So this is a warm-up session?
This is a warm-up session.
Yeah, we're in the bullpen.
It's pretty hot already, you know? Okay, so, I mean, I'm looking at the clock, we've got a lot more items to do, but just for the sake of bluntness, our manager of our housing department, when we talk about a middle-class issue, when we talk about the working-class issue, how many folks, and let's just start from the bottom, in terms of socioeconomic strata, how many folks do we know are homeless today?
Oh, my God.
What's the number?
48,000 and counting.
And every night, how many families are sleeping out in the street? Do we know?
Thousands.
Give me a number. Ballpark?
10,000.
10,000 people, families, living in the street because they have no place to live?
Correct.
Middle-class folks, our firefighters, our, our police department, how many of those folks cannot afford to pay rent today, or more than 30% of their income?
An, actually, a very sizable number.
Ballpark figure?
Well, I mean, I can only tell you that Forbes says that only 2% of Angelenos can afford the median-priced home. So we've dropped, last year, we were at 12% could afford, now we're at 2% can afford.
2% can afford of...
A median-priced home of about $540,000. We're in trouble.
And these are people making around $50,000 a year.
And, oh, these are people making much more than that. These, people at $100,000 a year can't afford that, without help.
Counsel colleagues, I know I've been saying this up till I was blue in the face. I know I pushed hard two, three years ago for a zoning that I don't want to repeat because I don't know what's going to happen when people react to it, but the fact is, I want to protect the mom-and-pops who are in the business of living in their duplex and triplex and quadruplex. Does the current ordinance allow for that?
It does, and more.
It does protect the mom-and-pop?
It does.
Does it prevent the ability for speculators to come and buy these lots in a linear fashion or whatever fashion, to bulldoze those, to tear down those units, in order to build higher-end, more expensive?
Not only does it not prevent that, it would incentivize it by saying, "You get an exemption if that's what you do."
And that is without requiring affordable units?
Correct.
So in essence, the opportunities that will be created makes it harder for our middle-class and our working-class to even live in our own city?
Yes.
So 2/3 of the city is made up of renters?
Yes.
So we are directly penalizing the very same people that vote for us?
You could say that.
Okay. What do we need to do to alter the ordinance so that we can protect at least those who are mom-and-pop, who live in their unit, who can make a case for their hardship?
I think we would have to draw language, which I don't think would be all that difficult, actually, that would do something like this. If you own a triplex and you live in it, you would be permitted to be exempted from this. You would say, but only one, right? Only one triplex. Not, if you have five, you don't exempt them all. You can exempt the one you live in, and that's it, right? Because if you're beyond that, now you're no longer a mom-and-pop, you're actually, you know, an apartment owner. So we could do that fairly easily. And then you could even talk about if you buy later, if you buy this, you know, a unit later, a triplex later, and you are also an owner, what would be permitted to let them out if they purchase? But it could be drawn very easily, the language.
This current ordinance have that language?
No.
Could we instill that language by Tuesday?
Yes.
Okay. Colleagues, I voted for no exemption across the board with the understanding that we would have a hardship condition so that we can address, I believe, the folks that were intended to be addressed, in order for us not to penalize those property owners who live in their unit and who have that income as part of their retirement. What I was trying to contain is that process that keeps our own citizenry from our own neighborhoods, from being able to live in their own city. So I'll stop here, and do I make that as a formal amendment? That, if you can second on that, Counselmember Garcetti?
Motion.
The amendment I'm making is that we introduce language that allows us to establish a hardship exemption for those people who live in that unit, being that it's in that structure.
But nothing else?
Nothing else. And that way, we don't harm the folks who have been building this nest egg, working on that strategy, but also gives us a chance to preserve as much accessibility for housing for our own people that vote for us. Thank you.
Mr. Parks, followed by Mr. Garcetti.
I'd just like to ask Ed a question. When you mentioned the number, was it three units, owner-occupied?
I'm saying the strata of the duplex, triplex, or quadruplex.
Okay.
We, we keep it within that spectrum.
Ford, so you're saying four with owner occupied?
Right.
Fine.
Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you very much. And, and, Mr. Reyes, was, the one other thing that was brought up by Ms. Marquez as well, was the duration. I know that there's this great graph that we have, because, you know, the folks who are members of, of AGLA and CAA are longtime holders, they are the people who really do invest, and they're not speculators. Let me see if I can find the chart here. I know that, that we had this discussion before, that people who are using the Ellis Act for evictions, 45% of them have owned less than a year, 20% only one to two years. So when you get to that, that's, you're already at 65%, almost 2/3 have had less than two years. So you may want to, I don't know if you wanted to clarify it else, on, on the ownership, that was something you had brought up as well. So three-year is what Ms. Marquez is, is saying.
I, I would follow the advice of our general manager, understanding that they have a stronger sense of the dynamics, they can suggest a period of time that they feel is adequate. I, I would go with that.
Okay.
Three years is what we think.
So we add that. Talking with Mr. Parks in terms of making sure, because I think his intention, and, and, Mr. Reyes, what I've heard you say as well, was about those mom-and-pops and making sure, and that's really the lifeblood of a lot of those owners that have been mentioned, that we put that in. I think we can arrive at a place where we all agree. I appreciate, too, one of the speakers said, you know, what's, what's the rush? This will be Tuesday, so we do have a little more breathing time, but also, just, I want to put on the record, and, and it's, it's always the case for us who are elected officials, we can hold 15 meetings, and the 16th, there's always somebody who's coming to it, and it's great, it's part of the democratic process for the first time. This started in 2003, this first came to council as an ordinance eight months ago. So we have been, every single time, there's been an ask for continuation or for us to be able to do that. We really have bent over backwards to do that. So I want to establish for the record, there certainly has been, as I said yesterday in committee, not a rush. It's been one of the slowest processes I've dealt with since I've been here. So I think this is the right way to do it. It's not going to make people 100% happy, but this is not about establishing rent control, and it's not about abolishing rent control. It is about protecting what's there while incentivizing the right sorts of investments. And I think if we can do that, I know Ms. Marquez is going to be gone next week, so any last questions folks should ask of her, but I would, of course, strongly second that. And thank you, Mr. Reyes, to move forward with that.
We do have one other speaker, Mr. Rosendahl.
Yeah, I, I just want to ask some questions while you're here, and I certainly appreciated that friendly amendment about mom-pas with their units, that they should be protected and preserved, its cash flow, its income, its retirement, and we don't want to impact anybody of that ilk. One issue that has been raised to me by some of my constituents is that there have not been enough time to think about how this applies to people who are already in the pipeline. How does this new ordinance address people who have relied on the old rules?
When we spoke a little bit ago about a hardship exemption, that's what it's meant for. So that anyone who was already in the pipeline has 90 days to come forward, so that if they relied on the rules previous, if this passes, they get the benefit of what they relied on before. So they won't be impacted, because we'll open a 90-day window for people to come forward and claim the exemption under the hardship. So they're taken care of.
And the second question is, in the coastal zone, which is where I'm at, everything west of Lincoln Boulevard falls into the Mellow Act, provides additional standards and requirements for affordable housing. How does this ordinance work with the Mellow Act? Are there any conflicts? Does one tread it on the other or conflict each other? What's the relationship between the Mellow Act and this?
I've been speaking to the city attorney about it, and there, there is no conflict. However, should be, the reason there is no conflict is because you won't be able to double count. You have to meet your Mellow requirement, and in addition to that, you would have to meet this new requirement if you chose to build units. So you could not get a twofer, right? You'd have to build Mellow units in addition to these new Ellis units.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. So, Mr. Clerk, this item, we will continue or note and file?
No, this will actually be continued, but I believe, Mr. Reyes, you were going to clarify one more thing on the amendment.
Mr. Reyes?
Yes, the amendment that we introduced speaks to how we identify hardship exemptions, and I would ask the general manager if we can provide that language to make sure we are covering those gaps.
Yes, of course.
And that will go to the clerk.
So as, as amended, it'll come back on Tuesday for, for a full vote?
Great. Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, next item?
Item 15 was called special by Counselmember Reyes.
Mr. Reyes, item number 15?
Yes, colleagues, item 15 is a planning and land use management case that was before us yesterday. Unfortunately, the workload in Plum is very intense. This is about the third hour in Plum. Unfortunately, I lost quorum by that time, and as such, we need to have this hearing. What we have before us is a historic designation, a communication from the Cultural Heritage Commission, relative to the inclusion of the San Marino Vias for property at 3390-96 West San Marino Street and Sereno Avenue in Council District 10. And if we can have the public hearing, then move forward.
Thank you. We have public hearing? So we have, sorry...
I know you're bouncing like three things in here.
I am, I'm trying to multitask, which women usually do really well.
This is public hearing time.
So have public hearing, I have the cards, I was ready for that. So, how many minutes? We do have several cards, so.
10 minutes each?
10 minutes. 10 minutes total, I think, probably, so.
If I may, Madam President, if, I'd also like to afford the Council District to state its position, being that this is part of the public hearing process as well, if they so choose.
Okay. Great. So I will call the following individuals. Marion Garson is our first speaker, followed by Diane Marti, followed by Margaret Fuji. Before you speak, I just, the city attorney would like to make clarification here.
And just a reminder, council members, this should be treated the same as a fair hearing matter, requiring the council members' heightened attention.
Good afternoon. My name is Marion Garson. I'm a neighbor and a friend of the applicant who are, who the residents of the building in question. And I'm just here to support the unanimous decision that was handed down by the Cultural and Heritage Commission that, that granted the designation of the building for a historic monument. I live in the neighborhood, just down the street, and I've been a witness to a lot of the changes that have gone on, a lot of demolitions and other buildings going in, and it has definitely affected our neighborhood. And my concern is that not enough, not enough concentration is on the preservation and the respect of the historical nature of our neighborhoods. We have some beautiful buildings there, and when these new buildings are going in, they don't really blend well with the neighborhood. And my concern is that, in the future, that some of these, some of these things you're talking about under the Ellis Act will continue. And I think that a lot of more thought has to go into evaluating the, the character of the building. These are the buildings that went into the building of our city. And the, these people that are here today have lived there for, in that building for 20 years or more, and they take great pride in it, and that's why they're here, to protect this building. So I'm here to, to support the designation of the building in question for registry with this, as a historic monument. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane Marti is next.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Diane Marti. I'm a resident of 3390 San Marino for more than 20 years. And thank you, Mr. Wesson, thank you, Mr. Wes Hall. They've been so helpful to our entire community in their support of our precious historic neighborhood. I absolutely support and encourage the historic monument status for our building. If you saw it, you would too, all of you, truthfully. But you don't have to see it. That's why you have all these experts in place. You have your wonderful Cultural Heritage Commission. They truly are the experts. It was a unanimous decision on their part, resoundingly so, very enthusiastic. We have the Plum Committee. The City of Los Angeles has put all these people in place in their area of expertise, and I know you will respect that and concur. That's really all I have to say. Please designate 3390 San Marino as a historic monument. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Margaret Fuji.
Hi, my name is Margaret Fuji. I'm in support of designating that building also. I've lived in that area for 30 years, directly across from that building. What is that song? Everything old is new again? Unfortunately, the everything old is being torn down to build new again. Mercedes was talking, and Mr. Reyes, thank you kindly, was talking with regards to affordable housing, and talking about substantial monies to move with regards to all these people that are here. One lady kindly said, "Well, oh, they can apply for Section 8 housing." How do you qualify for Section 8 housing? And if you do qualify for Section 8 housing, how long are you going to be on the waiting list? list? I have friends that are disabled that have been on it for years. What's that the equivalent of? Let them eat cake? Please! Koreatown is, at one time, when we're talking about Serrano, Oxford, Hobart, Harvard, all these streets, this was old LA, this was moneyed LA, beautiful buildings, architectural gems that are constantly being torn down, and what's being evicted is these blocks. It makes no difference whether they've taken up a whole block of buildings, as Mercedes was saying, when they come in and buy the duplexes all at one time, or whether it's just one craftsman's bungalow that was there, and they're putting up like an eight-story building in place, and next door to it, you have a gorgeous old duplex or a craftsman bungalow. And it's happening every block in Koreatown, it looks like, you have to see it, you really have to drive through and see it. Mercedes was talking with regards to affordable housing, and I think I mentioned yesterday with regards to the article that was in the Los Angeles Business Journal of April the 30th, of the 2,000 units that are being built there, at $650 to $1,000 per square foot, these units are going to go for over a million dollars? That's affordable housing? I don't think so.
Thank you.
Mr. Reyes, you rock.
Charles Fisher is our next speaker.
Good morning, honorable council members. Charlie Fisher, 140 South Avenue, 57 in Highland Park. I wrote the nomination for the San Marino Villas for historic monument. I've got about 85 monuments that I've done over the years. I'll try and make it very quick, because I know we don't have a lot of time. Want to quote one thing that one of the commissioners told me, it's already been touched on how enthusiastically they voted this. One of the commissioners, we were inspecting several other buildings in the neighborhood, and the commissioner turned to me and said, "You know, after San Marino Villas, it puts a high bar for the other buildings to meet." This building is an extraordinary piece of craftsmanship, an extraordinary piece of architecture, and the commission saw that. One of the other commissioners commented in the hearing that to look at what we presented and the building that they inspected and compare it with the report that was presented, they swear they were looking at two different buildings. And thank you very much for your support in this, and thank you.
Thank you. Jay Platt is our next speaker.
Good afternoon, council members. Jay Platt for the Los Angeles Conservancy. I just wanted to express our gratitude to the Cultural Heritage Commission for its unanimous decision and to the council office for its support of this nomination. We think it's a very strong nomination, an important building in an important neighborhood, a fragile neighborhood, increasingly fragile, and through designations such as this, we are able to promote the preservation of not just our heritage, but also the recognition of the importance of the variety, the wide variety of housing types that we have in the city, and the gratitude that people have who have the opportunity to live in the historic buildings that we treasure so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Marian Garson is our next speaker. Marian Garson?
She already spoke.
I'm sorry, and so did Diane Marti. I have a second card, and so did Margaret Fuji. John Bowman? Bowman?
Good afternoon, members of the city council, my name is John Bowman, I represent the owner of this property, who is strongly opposed to this application to designate the property as a historic monument. The application was filed by the existing tenants in this 10-unit apartment building in an apparent attempt to exact additional financial concessions from my client beyond the relocation assistance provided by law, and in our view, that is a complete misuse and abuse of the city's historic preservation laws. Furthermore, this application has already been deemed denied by operation of law. Specifically, the administrative code provides that the city council must act on an application within 90 days of the date of the Cultural Heritage Commission's hearing, and failure to act within that time period means the application's deemed denied. In this case, that 90 days expired on May 2nd, and I want to make it clear that the owner has not waived time and is not today waiving time. And lastly, let me state that in our view, the application of the city's historic preservation laws in this case has been grossly unfair to the property owner. Prior to acquiring this property, the owner, in good faith, went through the due diligence process and had no reason to believe that this property would ever be considered by anyone to be a monument. It was only after acquiring the property and expending substantial funds towards the redevelopment of the site that this application was filed, and essentially, the owner was blindsided by the application, and we would ask that that be taken into consideration. Please vote to not designate this property as a monument. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anna Marie Brooks is our next speaker. And then Shon Wang.
Good afternoon, council persons. You're used to seeing me here advocating four things on the usual course of preservation. I was asked to write the historic study on this building, and yes, one could look at my study and say, gee, it's a totally different building, and that would be because the commission saw only three of the 10 units. This building started its life as a six-unit building. It has subsequently been carved into 10 units, and some of those units are not so pretty, have no relation to historic integrity, and really, there is no financially feasible way to bring them back. So declaring this a monument really does a disservice, because there is no private enterprise person who could afford to do the rehabilitation necessary to make this again what a monument should be. A monument should not be a building that sits in decay, a monument should be a building in full use, fully rehabilitated. There is no private enterprise that can afford to make that happen sadly for this building. There are several other fabulous buildings of the same vintage, of different styles, and some of the same style, in this neighborhood within two blocks. Currently, only one of them very recently has become a monument. All of the others sit in wait. I would suggest that council would better use their designation power to encourage others, perhaps the Conservancy or someone else, to nominate and preserve those buildings and sadly, let this building go. Thank you.
Shon Wang is our next speaker, and then Dennis Wu.
Yes, good afternoon, honorable councilmen. My name is Shon Wang, I'm the property owner of 3390 San Marino Avenue. For the past 28 years, as a latecomer, I believe in this system, because this system let all voice heard, no matter how depressed, how weak the voice is. This system let all question raised, no matter how insignificant the question may seem. And my first question is that, should this building has such historic significance, how come for all these years, the tenants haven't done anything? Like some of them said, they've been living there for 28 years. And I think my attorney already has some answer to that. This application was submitted without the owner's prior knowledge, yet I was approached by the tenants right after the committee hearing, and the negotiation been going on, and it only turned out that this process of historic designation has been used by the tenants for their own agenda, moreover, for their own gains. And fortunately, our councilman, Wesson, saw that and tried to put a stop to this kind of abuse by sending his senior staff to the Heritage Committee to spoke up, to speak up against the designation. The LA city is a city with profound history. As an architect myself, I saw a lot of buildings need to be preserved. Let's focus on this. Don't let this kind of abuse of the system continue. We can put a stop to it. You can put a stop to it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dennis Wu is our next speaker.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Dennis, Dennis Wu, project manager of 3390 San Marino. I urge the city council to take this into consideration before deemed this property historical. To deem this property historical will leave the city with boarded eyesore, in addition, which will cause environmental impact to the city. Should the city deny the historical designation, we'd like to offer the following back to the community. Incorporate the existing Spanish colonial revival architecture features into the new project, set aside 10% affordable housing, and also double the existing relocation compensation to the existing tenants. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Richard Barron of our Cultural Heritage Commission, welcome.
Hi, good afternoon. Richard Barron, I'm vice president of the Cultural Heritage Commission, and I want to strongly support this nomination. The commission voted unanimously 5-0 on this nomination. It's a 1923 Spanish colonial revival building. The building does have maintenance issues, the building has had some conversions. I should also mention, I'm an architect, and I have worked on many historic buildings and renovations of buildings, some of which you're aware of, and this building is a good example of a building that can be brought back to its magnificence, and I think it doesn't lack controversy. And unfortunately, sometimes the commission has to deal with situations like this, and I just want to remind you of a situation, I think a year ago, where there was a building called the Marquez Gas Station. It was owned by a family for years. It was nominated not by the family, by an outside source. The building was made into a monument, it was subsequently sold for, I don't know, a couple million dollars. And recently, just this month, received Los Angeles Conservancy Award, it was a win-win situation for all involved. When the commission looks at buildings, we look at, our staff looks at the application, our staff reviews it, they make recommendations, we take it under serious consideration, we actually view the building, we go out to the site and make our findings, and we found that this building met the requirements to be considered a cultural monument, and I would like to encourage you to vote in that way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That closes the public hearing on this. We will, Mr. Reyes is on the queue, so we will call on him again on the second.
Thank you, Council President. Again, the committee held this, we listened to both sides, we weighed out the issues, we have advisory bodies, Cultural Heritage Commission, our Conservancy. I asked the question, are there other buildings like this? The assertion was that there are so many like this, it doesn't matter, really doesn't matter, but this goes away because it's been altered so significantly. Yet, we get other opinions, so in the balance, I asked the council district, what was their position, they've been working with both sides of the issue, and they recommended for historic designation, and that was a recommendation from Plum as a report from the chair. I asked for an high vote for identifying this as historic significance.
Thank you. Mr. Wesson.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President and members. I rise to say that we don't know everything, and we can learn things, new things every day, and initially, I had some concerns where related to this designation. But we backed off, and we talked to the community, and we looked at the building, I talked with the Chair of Plum, and those of you that said complimentary things about Ed Reyes, trust me, you said the right thing. So I listened to the Cultural Heritage Commission, and I have now come to the view that this is the right action for us to take. So I would like to ask my colleagues, join with my tutor, Ed Reyes, on these issues and ask for unanimous high vote.
Thank you. No other speakers on the queue. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
Thank you. Next item?
Madam President, that does leave the closed session items.
Before we go to the closed session, there was a card that was not received earlier, and the item does require a public comment, that's item number 36, so we need to reopen that item. Madam Clerk, for reconsideration, item number 36. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
Thank you. We'd go back out to Miriam Fogler.
Hello, yes, very important what you just did, and I'm speaking about the gentleman, Felipe Fuentes, he ran in my 39th Assembly District, you're talking, yeah, 36, that I hope that if he wins, he won here, I mean, I don't know if he did, but he's trying, he's working with Alakan in his office, I just want to make sure we don't have a vacancy in our district. I just want to make sure that if he was elected, that he's going to be where he's supposed to be, and wish him luck, and I just pray that he will not pass, I want him to be on the side of the citizens and have gun rights, you know, the Democrats said that we need more conservative, you know, to looking out for our country and, you know, patriotism, and just wish the best of luck and everything. So, you know, everything's going well, and hope good health, and that he will do the right thing in the Capitol there. All right? Thank you very much for your time, and thank you very much. Have a good, have a nice day.
Thank you, you too. Madam Clerk, open the roll.
And Madam President, just for clarification, this is, as it been once again.
I'm sorry?
There was an amendment on this one.
Yes. So with the amendment, Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
Next item?
That would leave the closed session items.
Okay. We will now go into executive session. If the guards could please clear the room. Thank you, we're back in open session. Madam Clerk, or Mr. Clerk, the item that was before us?
Yes, Madam President, on item 44, there's a recommendation for a stipulated award in the amount of $134,062, in the workers' comp case of Robert Neamy versus City of Los Angeles.
That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
Thank you. We'll have that forthwith, please. Do we have announcements today?
Oh, go ahead, Ms. Han first.
Ms. Rosenthal.
You know, this has been the week of Ride a Bike to Work Week, which has been an amazing experience for a lot of people who haven't ridden a bike lately, but those who are ardent bikers really appreciate our support of it. Tomorrow, if you would like, you can go on the metro for free. It won't cost you anything if you bring your bike with you and you do the bike strategy. So I urge everybody who wants to get their legs going and their lungs going, to get on the bike and get on the metro, and let's ride more bikes, that's a great way to deal with the pollution issue as well as our own health issues. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. I know that we now no longer have a quorum, so Mr. Clerk?
And Madam President, just for the record, item 47 was to be continued one week to next Wednesday.
Thank you. Any other announcements which we can do in open session? If not? Tomorrow morning, we will have a pit stop in the Bike to Work Week at Fulton and Burbank, and so early, in 7:00 in the morning, a lot of my staff will be out there providing resources to those bikers, so we encourage them to bike to work, and any way we can not take cars is great. So thank you very much, this meeting is now adjourned.